Evening, everybody. I am going to get started. It is already seven o'clock and want to make sure that we start on time. Welcome to the agenda, to the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency's special meeting, 7:00 PM, Tuesday, November 17, 2015. Can I have roll call?
Councilmember Clapp.
President.
Councilmember Wyrick.
President.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Protent Blatt.
Here.
And Mayor Lar.
Here.
Could I have Councilmember Haney lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We do have some seats out here if there's some people outside wanting to sit down. This evening, we're going to start off with the presentation, a CILID presentation by CDFA. Yes, if you could come in, state your name and then...
Yes, my name is Victoria Hornbaker. I am the citrus program manager for the California Department of Food and Agriculture. I think we sent you guys a presentation.
Yes. Thank you.
And then I also have with me Dr. Beth Grafton Cardwell. Beth, do you want to introduce yourself? And then Henry, do you want to... We're kind of, we're all, it's a joint effort.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dr. Beth Grafton Cardwell. I'm with the University of California at Riverside, but I'm stationed in the San Joaquin Valley at the Linko Research and Extension Center, and I've been doing citrus IPM for the past 25 years.
My name is Henry Gonzalez, and I serve as Ventura County's Agricultural Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, let's see, this is the little guy that's going to advance my slides.
Right, left, arrow.
Okay. So, we've made our introductions. We appreciate you guys taking the time to allow us to come in and talk to you tonight. I know there's been a lot of activity in the county and recently in your city, so thanks for allowing us to come. So what's the threat? What are we talking about here? Right now, we're talking about a little tiny insect called the Asian citrus CILID. The CILID feeds on plant material. It is a phloem feeder, so that means that it's going to pierce into the leaf or the stem, and it's going to suck the nutrients out of the plant. But at the same time, it can spread a deadly disease. So, the insect can cause a little bit of damage. The main concern we have is that it can carry a disease called Wong Long Bing. You may have also heard it referred to as citrus greening. This disease is a deadly citrus disease. It will, there's no cure for it. There's no way to stop the progression of the disease. Once a plant gets infected, it will die. There can be a latency period associated with the infection, so we may have a tree that's infected and slowly dying, can take anywhere from, I don't know, two to five years. Some people say seven. We do have the insect here in Ventura. So far, we don't have the disease in Ventura, but we do, we have found the disease just south of you guys in LA County. So here's our current ACP quarantine. Everything under red is under quarantine, so all of Ventura County, all of Southern California, the whole County of Tulare, and then some small quarantine areas in different parts of Kern County, a little bit in Fresno, Madera, San Benito, Santa Clara County, and San Joaquin County. And recently, we've had finds in San Mateo and also in Stanislaus Counties. So the disease, like I said, Wong Long Bing, you may heard it referred to as citrus greening or HLB. There is no cure. It's a deadly disease. Citrus, like I said, will die once it's infected. You can eat the fruit off of an HLB-infected tree. It's not going to be tasty. It's going to be very bitter, but it's not going to hurt you. It's not going to hurt animals. The impact on Florida citrus, these numbers are a little bit old, but over $3 billion in lost economic activity in Florida, over 6,000 jobs lost, and six out of 10 residents here in California, we estimate, has at least one citrus tree. I was on a phone call on Monday with my partners in Florida, and they have announced that they have the lowest yield that they've ever had since they started counting yields of citrus in Florida. In fact, they're projecting having a lower yield than California's going to have this year. So, it's really getting very bad in Florida, and it's due to this disease. So, like I said, we do have HLB in LA County. Originally, we found a tree in 2012 in the community of Hacienda Heights, and then this year in July, we confirmed a tree in San Gabriel. Over a period of time and doing some survey work, we actually found that we had 10 positive trees on eight properties. The homeowners realizing the gravity of this disease and how it would impact their neighbors and their community allowed our crews to go in and remove the trees. The trees were quickly removed and destroyed to remove any additional threat of spreading the disease, which is great, but as Beth can attest, and I'll have her talk a little bit more in depth about that, doesn't mean that the disease isn't out there potentially in other trees. And then, Henry, do you want to talk about county?
Thank you, Victoria. I just wanted to mention the updated numbers here that we have for the value of citrus here in the county. We had a record year with lemon production at $269 million, mandarins at 12, and oranges at 20. But more than just the value, the commercial value to growers and subsequently to the community of citrus to Ventura County, it's also the iconic value. It is something with which not only Southern California, but Ventura County identifies. Ventura County is the number-one lemon-producing county in the nation. We love our lemons here, and we want to keep them that way, and it's not only the commercial production, but as Victoria said, almost everybody has a citrus tree in their backyard of one sort or another, and all of those are subject to the, not only to the pest, but eventually to the disease as well. And so, we're trying to protect all of that for us and for the future. Thank you very much. I'll be here for any questions that I may be able to answer.
You might have another slide, I'm not sure. I think Paul may have mentioned it. Well, you want to talk about what...
Well, there is detection activities going on. Interestingly, in the County of Ventura, it's the state that does the, most of the trapping. We do conduct trapping here for ACP, but our trapping that our department does is at the packing houses, which interestingly enough, even though packing houses may not have any host material, we were able to detect the very first ACP at one of the packing houses, and we've been able to subsequently show that they can move around on bulk shipments of citrus moving back and forth. So, anyway, that's the treatments that we do. And in addition to that, what we've been doing a lot since about 2009, when we first discovered the ACP, is we've been conducting outreach to folks. I know I've been here before to talk about this pest. It is something that progresses slowly over time, and so we tell folks, it's coming, it's coming, now it's here, it's here. We know now that the disease is coming, and so now we're ringing the alarm that the disease is coming, because just like we rang the alarm that the citrus CILID was coming, and now it is here, we're ringing the alarm that the disease is coming, and we don't want it here. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. So, Beth, I think this might be kind of talking about why we're due treatments for the CILID. Do you want to...
Because there's currently no cure for the disease, the best way to prevent the spread of the disease is to reduce the number of CILIDS out there, because if a tree has the disease and there's no vector, no animal that can move it from one tree to the next, the disease just sits there and gradually kills the tree. But if you have a vector, an animal that can spread the disease like this CILID, it can pick it up and start moving it around. And this disease spreads faster than any that I have ever seen in any of the crops I've worked in. Florida first discovered the disease in 2005. Now, they estimate 100% of their commercial citrus has Wong Long Bing in it. So, in a 10-year period, it has spread throughout the entire state of Florida, and part of the reason it spreads so fast is because of the way the insect acts. It lays its eggs right next to where it introduces a little bacterial infection. Those eggs hatch, and the nymphs feed on that infection, and then when they molt and fly away as adults, they take the disease with them. So there's no lag time for them, but there's a big lag time for us finding the infected trees. So, the best way we can control this whole thing is to keep the CILID numbers as low as possible. And in Florida, they didn't do that, and everything spread really fast. We've had the CILID since 2008. Thank you. I get confused sometimes between Florida and California. Since 2008, and we first discovered the disease in one tree in 2012, and here we are, 2015, we still don't have CILIDS everywhere in California, and we still don't have the disease spreading like wildfire like Florida did, partly because we've been so careful to control this pest. So what works in terms of controlling the pests? Conventional insecticides happen to be the most effective, and partly because when you synthesize a chemical, it tends to persist longer. And as most growers know, when you spray a citrus orchard, you never kill every one of them, because a lot of the eggs and nymphs are tucked inside leaves, and the spray doesn't get to them. So, if you spray a conventional insecticide and the insect emerges, it comes in contact with the residues of that conventional insecticide and then is killed. If you use organic insecticides, they tend to be extremely short-lived, and really, you have to get contact with the insect body, or you don't kill the insect. And so, if you, if a grower sprays an organic insecticide, and some of those eggs or nymphs get missed, and they emerge as adults, and they start flying around, there's nothing to kill them. And so, it's very, very difficult to manage this pest with organic insecticides. It can be done in the sense of spraying frequently. You could probably achieve close to what you get with a single application of conventional insecticide, but we're still doing studies to understand that fully. So we don't totally discount organics when we're trying to manage this pest, but we know that the conventional synthetic insecticides work a whole lot better. Biological control is happening in Southern California, because there's too many backyards to be spraying, and so they're releasing a little tiny parasitic wasp called Tammaryxia, and it's partially effective. The CILID population builds up, the Tammaryxia finds it, starts parasitizing and bringing it back down. If all we had was a CILID, that would be great. That would work perfectly. But in the period of time while that CILID population is building up, it's spreading the disease potentially, and so the parasites can't keep the population low enough in order to prevent disease spread. So that's why it's very, very important that wherever possible, we use insecticides to minimize the number of CILIDS, so that they're not finding those diseased trees and spreading it. Could you have a diseased tree here in Ojai? Maybe. Or maybe it's not here yet, but it's going to come soon, because only 60 miles away, there are infected trees. And eventually, because everybody's got citrus in their backyards, the CILIDS with the disease in their bodies are going to hop, skip, and jump and head this way. So what we're asking people to do is just be part of the process of trying to buy time for the researchers to find a cure for the disease, and the way we buy time is we lower those CILID populations as far as we possibly can. And I, too, will be here to answer any questions.
So this program is not just a state-run or county-run program. It is a cooperative program. I've worked in agriculture for many years, and by far, this is probably the most cooperative program I've ever been a part of. We have federal partners. We get funding, and we get a lot of scientific background information from our federal partners. We have state cooperators, so Food and Ag, Department of Pesticide Regulation, whenever we go into a new area, they come out and they actually do environmental monitoring of our treatments. We work with the Office of Health Hazard Assessment to make sure that any chemicals or anything that we're using meets that high level of safety for humans, so we're not, you know, doing anything that's going to impact humans. We work with the Cooperative Extension. We work with our county partners, the cities, the residents, and the citrus industry. So the citrus industry is actually funding a majority of the work that we do on an assessment to themselves, because they've seen what's happened in Florida. They see what's happening right now in Texas, and they really want to help preserve our industry here in California. So, let's see. So what can community leaders do? We always, when we come out, we always try to have an ask. You know, main thing is for you guys to share information with residents. I know that we've had our PR firm that we contract with, NST, send you guys some things like bookmarks and flyers, and continue to hand those out to people. To encourage your residents to cooperate with our ag inspectors and our treatment crews as they're coming through and looking for signs of the disease, we do a very intensive survey throughout all of Southern California and up into the Central Valley, looking for diseased plant material, and also collecting live CILIDS to do PCR analysis on to see if they're carrying the bacteria. And be supportive of the process. Residents, you know, the main thing for them is to cooperate, and really not to move any citrus plants or budwood into or out of a quarantine area. So we always want people, encourage them to, you know, enjoy their citrus locally, buy from local reputable nurseries, buy from local markets. Don't dig up a small tree in your backyard and send it to your cousin in Sacramento, because you may be inadvertently sending the CILIDS or the disease up that way. We also want people to report things that look out of the ordinary with their citrus trees. We have a 1-800 number, and either somebody from CDFA staff or the county will come out and take a look at that. We also have several websites. So we have the CaliforniaCitrusThreat.org. That's a website that people can go out, they can look at the insect, they can look at what the disease symptoms might look like. They can go to the Ventura website to get information, and also, which I don't have it up there, yeah, the UCIPM website. There's also information on what homeowners can do if they prefer to handle treatment on their own, both conventional and organic options. So, that's what we have for you today. Any questions?
Yeah. Councilmember Clapp.
I have a couple of questions. Is the insecticide that you use specific to the CILID and only the CILID?
No. It's a, they're broad-spectrum insecticides that are used for many different types of insects.
Okay. And are the organics that are used specific to the CILID?
No, they are also broad-spectrum, broad-spectrum insecticides, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Wyrick.
There are people with orchards that can't afford to water them anymore, so they are getting stressed. Understand, stressed trees are especially a risk factor? Not really?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's hard to say. There are some folks that think that trees that are stressed may be more susceptible or more attractive to CILIDS that are carrying the disease or the bacteria, but not necessarily just to CILIDS in general.
I just ask, because I've seen examples around the county where people just, they can't afford to keep their trees alive anymore, so they're slowly dying, and whether that's a special risk factor or not.
You know, if you're not watering your tree, chances are, you're not doing any type of maintenance for your tree either. So we do try to encourage folks that, we kind of call it the unloved citrus. If you have a tree in your yard, and you just really aren't, you know, you're not collecting fruit from it, you're not watering it, you're not maintaining it, best bet for your community to protect their citrus and the state is to take that tree out.
Mayor, any more questions? Councilmember Haney.
Can you identify what the tree in a stressed condition looks like, just briefly?
What a, what a, what a tree that's showing symptoms of HLB? You know, so there are some symptoms that we say are pretty telltale for HLB, and Beth, you may want to talk about it, too. They call it blotchy modeling or blotchy yellowing, so something similar to the bottom where the, there's, it's not symmetrical. And then the top leaf there is something called quirky veins, where the veins start to harden off while the leaf is still viable. Things like lopsided fruit that doesn't ripen evenly and maintains a very bitter taste, that's also a symptom. However, we have found in San Gabriel that we did have trees that appeared to be asymptomatic that did test positive for the disease. They didn't show the traditional symptoms that we see in Florida. You want to...
I'll just make the comment that it takes probably a year or two for these symptoms to show up, but the tree can be infected during that whole time, and CILIDS can be spreading the disease. So, one of the things that the industry is paying for and CDFA is doing is collecting CILIDS off of trees in lots of locations and testing the CILIDS, because if they have the bacteria in their body, they've got the bacteria, and it will be, test positive. But a tree might not be showing symptoms, and might not have built up its bacterial titer, and you may pick a leaf, and it may not show in the testing that it's, the tree is positive, because the bacteria hasn't made it to that leaf yet. And so, symptoms are tough to watch for, because citrus trees turn yellow for lots of different reasons. Nutrients are a big one, and a lot of people don't apply any nutrients to their trees, and so they have yellow leaves. So, what we're trying to do is use more of the CILIDS and trained eyes on the symptomology to pick out which trees might be suspect, and then testing both the CILIDS and the leaves.
Can we talk to the actual quarantine methodology? How you choose the site, and then how you actually quarantine the site, and then how you actually apply the pesticides? And how do the residents work in conjunction with the quarantine, either opting out or figuring out how not to, if they don't want to be a part of your...
Okay, so there's two different things. And I think what you're trying to focus on is the treatments, response to a find. Quarantine is, quarantine's a regulatory thing that we use to prevent the artificial movement, right? So that's going to prevent us from allowing citrus nursery stock to move into and out of an area that might be carrying the CILID or the disease, or to prevent the movement of bulk citrus. Treatments now, if, so let's say, I live in Ventura County, and I'm near, within a mile and a half of commercial citrus. I'm not in an area-wide treatment area, and CDFA has a trap in my tree, and they find a CILID on that trap. That becomes a positive find site, and we do response activity to that find site. Our response right now is a 400-meter treatment area. So, we make a map of the treatment area, we hold a public meeting, we invite the people that are in that 400-meter area, and then also in, I want to say, a 100-meter buffer, because they might be seeing the activity of trucks and different things going on. We have the public meeting, folks are given information, we answer questions, they have the opportunity to opt out and say, "I don't want you on my property, don't treat my property," or "I want to handle it myself." Then we either have our state crews, or we have contractors that come out and do the treatments. They're all trained professionals. They do it in conjunction with the county. They have oversight. Our folks don't get any special exemptions. We operate under the same rules and regulations of anybody applying a pesticide in the state of California. We're obligated to follow the label directions. We can't use pesticides that haven't been evaluated under our environmental impact report, so that we're meeting CEQA compliance. So, there's a lot, in fact, we do a little, have to do sometimes more than a regular contractor that's going out and that I call to come treat for ants on my property or something. So, it's not mandatory. Folks aren't required to allow us to treat right now, because it's just for the CILID. If it comes to pass that we have an HLB find in the county, the treatments for ACP will be mandatory. At that point, it becomes a matter of preventing the spread of a disease that will devastate your community citrus and will devastate our state citrus. So at that point, it will become a mandatory program.
Any other questions? No. I do have one. In terms of your, first of all, I appreciate you coming out and doing the presentation, because it's absolutely important, and we do live in a city that a lot of residents do have citrus. I have lots of clients. I'm a landscape contractor, different from Councilmember Haney, but it's, I do see a little bit more of the agriculture that's grown in this city and in the county. My question is, in terms of the research that you guys are doing right now, what type of research? Are you doing soil tests? Are you doing more research on how do you cure the disease? Are you doing more research, just how do you eliminate the bug organically or using pesticide? Like, could you give us just a brief...
I'll talk a little bit about some stuff, and then I'll have Beth talk about some other stuff that's going on at the UC level. So I belong to a group called the Multi-Agency Cooperative. It is a federally funded group that includes representatives from California, Texas, Florida, Louisiana, Arizona, the USDA, and all the state agencies and industry. We had $21 million to spend on what we were calling shovel-ready projects for citrus. And those range from detecting the disease earlier than what we can do now, controlling the CILIDS better, ramping up biocontrol, looking at things like detector dogs to sniff the disease while it's in the trees, therapies to allow people that are already in a disease area, like in Florida, maintain their groves two to three years longer than they would under the disease circumstance. Nothing really for us on cure. That, there's a lot of work going on on that, though, through other grants, and it's an international issue. I was at a, we were at a conference in Florida at the beginning of the year, and there were researchers from 27 countries, Beth, that are all working on this disease. So, there's a lot of effort and money going into things like cures, technologies, yeah, resistant root stocks, therapies, and then, do you want to talk about the stuff that you guys do for, at the UC level?
There are literally hundreds of people working on this problem, trying to solve it, and they're doing it from every different angle. They're trying to figure out how to alter the insect, so it can't pick up the disease. They're trying to figure out how to attract the insect better to traps, so that maybe they could use attract and kill unhappily. It's very complex, and it's not easily attracted to traps. They're working on resistant root stocks, but even if they came up with one, you'd have to replant all the citrus, which is a big job. They're looking at altering, creating plants that can be transformed, so that they can resist the Wong Long Bing disease, the bacterium. Lots and lots of research going on. They're looking on better ways to multiply those little parasitic wasps, so they could release millions of them instead of thousands of them. We screen pesticides. We're looking at all the different kinds of pesticides we possibly can. Florida looks a lot at nutritionals, because as Victoria said, they're trying to figure out how to push their trees a couple of years more before the disease, they succumb to the disease. So, I don't know, it's wide open. I see incredibly creative things happening. It's just, most of them are taking time, and it's probably going to take a multiple set of tasks to solve the problem. It's not going to be one thing that cures it, but multiple things that we do to try and manage this particular disease. And meanwhile, Rome is burning in Florida, Texas, and Mexico.
Thank you. I do have some speaker's card for the presentation, but I, we do need to move on with our meeting. Rhonda, could you set the time for a minute? And I'm going to ask you to keep your comments short and to the point, and then I'm sure that there'll be more opportunity for you to ask the presenter some questions.
Thank you. Tony Thatcher, 1-5275, Maricopa Highway, Ojai, California, Friends Ranch. I just wanted to stress to the homeowners that, you know, we look at neighborhood trees and people who opt out of the system as being a reinfection source, or, you know, to grow, a place to grow the insects. There's lots of stuff on the website, both, they mentioned the UCIPM source, there's stuff from the county. You can just Google it. And I just wanted to mention that we do have a tree removal program. If people are unable to do it themselves, we have been some donations to the crew to help people get rid of trees that they don't want to own anymore. But we're hopeful of themselves, because we can't, we don't have an unlimited amount of funds for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Ayala.
Thank you. I'm also a grower here in Ojai and work closely with the Ojai Pixie Growers Association. A lot of us made a flyer from the growers, and I've left some outside on the table explaining the grower position. We are serious about it. The growers that have fallen into the treatment zones, commercial growers, people with more than 25 trees, we've had over 90% compliance in getting those. than 25 trees, we've had over 90% compliance in getting those orchards treated, whether organically or conventionally. But again, it is homeowners that we're concerned about, you know? If there's five trees in the center of Ojai that are breeding cillids, those cillids are blowing all over the valley, and we can't afford that. So that's why we set up the program with the crew, trying to get people to remove trees if they're unwilling to treat them. Obviously, we don't have unlimited bank funds to do that, but what else? You know, citrus is a huge part of the community, and we give back a lot to this community in terms of visitors and food and jobs, and thank you.
Thank you. Patty Pageling?
Good evening. I just wanted to talk about the toxic effects of the pesticides that are being used just a bit to treat for the Asian citrus cillid. I'm concerned about those effects, and also, I just wanted to point out that there is information that the cillid is not a death sentence for the citrus industry, the HLB is not a death sentence to the industry. There are instances of research that is going on right now showing that the HLB can be, the citrus screening disease can be cured, and I know that there's a long way to go on bringing it up to the level where, you know, the CDFAs will be able to use it in their repertoire. But I think it's really important to point out that there are ways to take care of the situation without putting pesticides into our environment, and I have given you that information before, and I also just handed out the letter that has that information, and I would be happy to share it with the people that are here from the county and the CDFAs.
Great, thank you. Cade Stevens? C-A-D-E, Cat Stevens? No. Rob, Robert?
I'm Robert Calder Davis Jr. I have lived at 1380 Gridley Road for just about 76 years, and I've been in the citrus business since I was about 14. First of all, I'd really like to thank the leaders of the state to be here tonight to talk to you folks. You're getting it from the best and the brightest. If we don't think this is local from an economic basis, we pointed out that there was $12 million worth of mandarins in Ventura County. $2.5 million of that is our own Pixie Growers Association. So it comes right down locally to here. As far as oranges, they're only $20 million anymore. It used to be, there were 15,000 acres 20 years ago, there's 3,000 today. The ACP is not the only coffin, the nail in the coffin of what we're doing. You asked earlier about research. This is not all ACP, but this is a report from the International Society of Citriculture in 2012 from the 13th International Citrus Congress. If you don't think there's scientific information that's going on about our industry, you're sadly mistaken.
Thank you.
I appreciate the ability to come here and say thank you for at least hearing about this.
Great, thank you. And I do want to echo the appreciation from the state coming and from the county coming. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you. And with that, I'm going to move on to our next segment of the meeting. Public communications is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the City Council's successor agency board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on the subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than the emergency items, no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council board are requested to fill out a speaker's cards prior to the council board reaching this point on the agenda. Comments must, comments must be limited to three minutes or less. My first speaker's card is Jerry Dunn.
Hi, I'm Jerry Dunn, City of Ojai. The City Council is employed by the people of Ojai, and this is the season when many employees get their annual performance reviews, so here is yours. This year, the council has made a series of stunningly bad decisions. You've harmed the community you're supposed to protect. Some decisions were reversed fast, like the confusing fence moratorium, but others caused damage that sadly cannot be reversed. You let the Ojai Valley Inn destroy the beloved 1923 Neff Lounge even though the entire Historic Preservation Commission and all seven planning commissioners voted against you. You've now agreed to reexamine the code on hedge height, but what about all the people you've already harmed, the ones you strong-armed into cutting down the green read that gave their families a sense of privacy and security? Why didn't you think and reexamine the code first rather than wield it like a chainsaw against us? The Smith family generously deeded to Ojai land behind City Hall with, and I'm quoting, "The express condition that it be used for public's purposes." Yet you're angling to give the community's land to private developers, directly violating the family's wishes. Is this ethical behavior? You failed to oversee the Building Appeals Board or curb its destructive projection of power. Take enforcement on public buildings. We all saw the comic opera at the vacant bowling alley with city officials threatening to smash their way in. You say the council alone has the power to make policy, yet it appears you've outsourced your thinking about policy to the Building Appeals Board. Three out of five of its members ran for city offices and lost, yet here they are pushing their agendas and directing decisions. Mayor Lara defends the BAB, saying it merely advises the council on policy recommendations. However, Mr. Blatts properly questioned why the BAB would be discussing issues like hedge heights. "I have no idea," he said, "how the Building Appeals Board got talking about and dealing with issues of zoning." Whose job is it to know and to corral the BAB if not yours? In addition, Building Appeals Chairman Bob Daddy has a screamingly obvious conflict of interest. His insurance agency sells coverage for Ojai buildings. Citizens have repeatedly called for his removal. The Ventura County Star reported the public outcry, but surprise, not a word about the Building Appeals Board appeared in the Ojai Valley News. Could it be because Bob Daddy now owns our only newspaper? When you have a public servant who privately silences his opposition, it seems like a conflict of interest worth your attention, doesn't it, council members? Will you fail to make the right decision on Bob Daddy too? Daddy did publish Councilman Wierich's long letter about putting bike paths into the arbolata. Mr. Wierich asserted the power of the general plan and completely tuned out the deep concern of residents for the beauty and privacy of their homes. Sound familiar, hedge lovers? The people of Ojai are dismayed at having to watch the city council like hawks, but it's necessary, as the hedge moratorium proved. Now, that was a good policy idea, but it came from the public, not from any of you. One council member suggested you might limit the public comments period. You know what? Looking back at the decisions you've made this year, I'd say you need all the help you can get, and we, the people who employ you, will be watching. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doug LaBarre?
Doug LaBarre, Ojai. In light of the recent city raid on the bowling alley a week ago last Tuesday, I am confused and would like clarification on what the end game is for the city. I refer to it as a raid because that best characterizes the tactics conducted by the city. The city requested an inspection warrant issued by the court. Steve Stewart, the city building inspector, rejected my request to change the time of the inspection from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM since I had another appointment at 10:00 AM. When asked how he would gain entry, he responded by stating, "We will cut the lock and break down the door." It is a fact that the community would like to see something done on the property. It may be a surprise, but that is what the owner is focused on. In the past, she has advanced plans to do something with the property at least four times. Each time, the city has rejected the proposal with no further guidance as to what would be acceptable. These attempts have cost her tens of thousands of dollars. She is jaded to the process with the city. When I showed her an affordable housing project I had drawn up for the property, she said she just doesn't believe the city is going to allow her to do anything there. Now, she has a buyer in escrow who has requested a concept review to the city, a rather tenuous time. Simultaneously, the city is amassing its resources to act punitively toward her efforts. On the one hand, the city said they have tried to contact her to no avail. On the other, they have contacted me several times in the past to inquire about and to inspect the property. They know how to gain access. There's a real estate sign with the name and phone number of the agent in front of the property. They know how to reach me, and I've been cooperative and helpful. The owner's proper mailing address is public information, but it wasn't used in the notifications. So what is really going on here? I found a clue in the public online video of the September 8th meeting of the Building Appeals Board. In that meeting concerning fines and fees on vacant buildings, it was stated by the city attorney that they want to intentionally be vague in the public meetings in order to not tip their hand to the property owners. Further discussion focuses on how to best, how best to fast-track the mounting of fees and fines in order to place a heavy lien, followed by forced entry to make corrections and bill the property owner. And if the owner didn't remove the lien by paying the fines, the city could foreclose a rather sneaky strategy. I would think the goal here is to get something happening on the bowling alley property. There presently is something in the works. It's about time the city started to be helpful instead of contrary. No one wants something to happen with the bowling alley more than the owner, and much more can be accomplished by cooperation and communication.
Steve Quilisi?
Thank you, Mayor Lara, council members, Steve Quilisi, West Eucalyptus Street in the city. I come to speak about this water business that's in your consent calendar because it doesn't usually come up for public comment.
So you want us to pull item number D?
It's one D, something like that, yeah.
One E?
At any rate, the recommendation from city staff is do nothing and let the state law take effect. Doing nothing, letting the state law take effect, I think, is perfectly reasonable. If the state law is more restrictive than the city's ordinance, then we have to do that, but I think you still have to change the ordinance. If you leave a more lax requirement in the municipal code than is in the state law, people are going to be confused, and you're going to be out of compliance with the state. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, could you elaborate what you meant by not doing anything in that memo?
So, yeah, the state of California has a December 1st deadline by which we have to indicate what we're going to do, and since there isn't enough time to develop a new policy that's more restrictive than the state policy right now, we felt that the best idea was to let the state model ordinance go into effect, and then down the line, when we see what that effect is, decide what to do, whether we want to adopt something ourselves, repeal what we have in the code, or take some other action.
So the state ordinance takes into effect and is adopted essentially by the city?
If the city, if the city does not take any action, the state model ordinance goes into effect by operation of law, and that's what we have to follow, similar to the building codes. The same thing has happened with the building code, since we have not adopted local amendments. Even though our municipal code reflects the 1997 version, we use the 2013 version because that's in effect by state law. So at some point in time, it will make sense to go back, take a look at the impact of this, and take appropriate action. But right now, we have to notify the state of something.
Okay. I don't see, I don't have any more speakers' cards. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? If not, then I will move to reports from council members. Councilmember Klopp? No. Councilmember Wierich?
Two quick things. Just a reminder to everyone, please don't kill the messenger, I'm just giving the news. Remember, 12-1 is the effective date, I believe, for the new sanitary district ordinance. So just a word to the wise, if you're engaged in real estate transactions, the lateral inspection requirement, I believe that's the effective date, and everyone should just be aware of it if you're involved in real estate transactions. Word to the wise. And then the second thing is that I have been attending meetings of the 7-11 Committee for the school board, for the school district. It's a really good group of people. They're trying to get their heads around a lot of data, they realize they have a lot to learn, but I want to just reiterate again, I brought this up before, this group is receptive to ideas other than just closing an elementary school. They are receptive to repurposing ideas, they are receptive to creative ideas about what, how to treat our schools as community assets, not just inside the city limits but throughout the valley. And I would just urge, if you have creative ideas, whether it's in the arts or in parks and recreation or whatever, if you have those ideas, it is time to express them, and they're very welcoming of anybody with those thoughts, contact the city office, I'm sorry. I forgot to bring the, my notes as to when the meetings are, but just call the school district office, they're more than happy to tell you about it, and now's the time for the community to pay attention and put the creative force that we have in this community towards this issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Haney?
Just a quick update on the cultural affairs ad hoc committee, that we had another meeting last night, and we're getting close to ringing forth our recommendation to the council.
Mayor Proton Blatts? I do have something, on that, I just want to elaborate with the cultural resources item that will be coming before, before the whole council, is that there will be some options, some discussions, and it's going to be, I think, a lively debate, and I think that it's important decisions that have to be made as far as protecting our cultural resources. I just, I also wanted to talk about another organization that I'm part of, and I'm going to read just a brief description of what it is because I think it's important, it affects Ventura County, in my opinion, the way transportation is done here throughout this region. The Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy, referred to RTP/SES, is a long-range visioning plan that balances future mobility and housing needs with economic, environmental, and public health goals. The RTP and the SES embodies a collective vision for the region's future and is developed, it's developed with input from local government, county, county transportation commissions, tribal governments, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and local stakeholders within the county of Imperial, Los Angeles, Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Ventura. What is at heart of the 2016 RTP/SES are over 2,000 transportation projects ranging from freeways improvements, railroad grade separation, bike lanes, new transits, hubs, and replacement bridges. These future investments were included in county plans developed by the six county transportation commissions and seeks to reduce traffic bottlenecks, improve the efficiency of regional network, and expand mobility choices for everyone. And I just wanted, I just wanted to give a quick synopsis of what this organization does. I'm actually on the Transportation Policy Committee, and it does have a direct impact with Ventura County. And the draft report just went out last month, and we have a six-month period to review, and it includes a lot of data from Ventura County and Ojai, too, so it is important to review because it has an impact on our transportation, funding from the state that affects local municipalities. So I just want to state, just wanted to bring everybody up to date. And my last, my last comment is, I just want, this weekend was good news for my daughter, she won her championship for soccer. And in that process, we went to Ojai Pixies to celebrate, and I also found out that there's been another group that's celebrating because I think it's huge, just to emphasize, I think, sports and youth, and there's D4 and D5 of Eagles for football just made the Super Bowl three times in a row. And to me, that's huge because we're from a small, little city that's made it to the Super Bowl in their division, playing against schools like Santa Barbara in the final. So I think that's just important to just recognize our sports here in Ojai. So I think that's just important to just recognize our sports here in Ojai.
Next is our consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Clapp?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatt?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. Our discussion item, item number two, agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures LLC for their use of Libby Bowl. And I, do we want an update on the revisions of the staff report or the agreement?
Yep, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to spend a little bit of time explaining how I see this from my perspective as a city manager.
Okay.
As you know, for the past four years or so, the Bowl was managed by the Libby Bowl Foundation, and earlier this year, they turned the keys back to the city and said that they can't make it happen. The city does not have the capacity to support the Bowl with the staff we have right now, so we can't just give the key to someone who wants to put on a concert and say good luck, but we also don't have the capacity to help them do the things they need to do to put on an event. The foundation, in their experience, what they've found is that there's a big financial commitment that's made upfront before an event ever sells a ticket. You've got a contract for talent, you've got to arrange for all the support that the talent needs, you've got to arrange for lighting and sound, you have to have an event staff and a security staff, there has to be a way to market the event, there has to be a way to sell tickets, and many other things, and this creates a huge nut of sunk costs, and you've got to pray to the heavens that you can sell enough tickets to at least break even. And kind of complicating that matter is that a lot of the talent is locked up in agreements with other entities that are putting on concerts in the region and are not allowing them to put on concerts here, so you have difficulty arranging talent. What the, what the foundation found is that they could not make a go of it, and they were losing about $80,000 a year. We could replicate what the foundation did. We could hire a Bowl manager, we could have that Bowl manager help people arrange for lighting, sound, all the things that I mentioned before, but I'm pretty sure the results of doing that, especially for community-type events as opposed to commercial-type events, would be the same or worse as what the foundation experienced. So today you have before you a proposed agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures. That is structured in such a way that the first, the city gets $2 per seat sold for each ticket, and so that would amount to somewhere between $20,000 and $40,000 over the course of the 2016 season, and that comes to us whether they make any money or they lose any money, or whatever happens, that's automatic. Then the first $30,000 of profit, if there is a profit, goes to Sterling, and then after that, the profit is split 60-40, with 60% going to Sterling and 40% going to the city. I really don't think we have much expectation that there's going to be a whole lot of profit to split, though, so what we're counting on is that $20,000 to $40,000. That money's really important because that's the money that is earmarked to go for the upkeep of Libby Bowl, and one of the most important reasons that we are looking at putting on events in Libby Bowl is so that we can maintain it over the long haul. As you recall, we had to tear down the old Libby Bowl and rebuild it, and the reason for that is that we weren't able to adequately maintain it. So we need somewhere between $20,000 to $30,000 per year to go into that fund to build up so when it's time to re-roof, we can re-roof, when it's time to put in new seats, we can put in new seats, when it's time to paint, we can paint, and therefore keep it up. Sterling has a Sterling reputation. He's operating other venues that are in the same size range as ours. He has a large number of entertainers, a list of which that he's provided to you, that he circulates among those, and he has a process to make things cost-effective by actually putting up the lighting and the sound on a semi-permanent basis himself, and then allowing each group as they come in to use it, so they can just literally plug in their guitar and start plucking. So in coming forward with this proposal, the council committee that was working on it reached out to all the other similar type of promoters that they could, that they were aware of. We got interest from Nederlander, which is another well-known one, and from Sterling, but at the end of the day, Sterling was the only one who made a proposal. At the last meeting, we discussed this, but there were a number of items that were brought up that needed to be addressed in terms of the language of the contract, and so that was done over the course of the last week, and you have before you on your desk a red lined version that shows the changes that were made, which I think were very good changes. So at this point in time, we think we're ready to go, and we think compared to either doing absolutely nothing, losing $80,000 to $100,000 a year, having a broad range of shows professionally managed and gaining $20,000 to $40,000 at the very minimum is a pretty good choice. So that would conclude my presentation. Mr. Sterling is here in the audience, and he's available to respond to whatever questions you may have.
Any questions for staff or Mr. Sterling at this moment?
From council?
I do, but I'd also like to hear from the public, because I think the public's now had a chance to look at this, and I think there are some comments from the public on this.
No initial comments?
No, I'd like to reserve my time for the comments.
Okay.
I reserve my comments, too.
I'm going to open the public comments.
Good evening, council members and staff. Mr. Sterling, I apologize for missing the meeting last week, so I'm not as well versed on this as I would like to be. I think it's a great idea that we have somebody in line to bring some shows on a regular basis. I did expect to see an RFP go out. Apparently, that's not going to happen. I do have some concerns about this issue going forward. One, the light and the sound are going to be put in on a semi-permanent basis. I just want to know if we think that's going to be aesthetically compatible with the Bowl, if it's not going to destroy the look of the Bowl that we just had rebuilt, and whether or not the music foundation, I mean, sorry, the Ojai Music Festivals have been contacted, and whether or not that will be compatible with their needs and uses, and it may well be, I don't know. In the agreement, I didn't see as far as the shared profit after $30,000, a timeframe for that remuneration. I didn't know if there was something that had been added since that staff report about 24 hours, 24 days, six months, and I just wondered if that had been taken into account. And I wondered if possibly the idea had been put forward about a stepped-up remuneration, instead of going immediately 60-40 at 30% profit, maybe starting off at 60-40 at $20,000 the first year and up to 25 the second year and so forth. But most of all, there have been many stories of creative accounting in the entertainment industry, and I wonder if any one of you has contacted an entertainment lawyer, someone who is versed in the entertainment industry, to go through this contract and see it. And I mean no disrespect to Mr. Silver, and I mean no disrespect to Mr. Summers, I just think it's part of due diligence to do that, and those are my concerns, but also at the end of the day, if we can fill this bowl, let's fill it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer some of those?
Yeah, well, let's let all the public comment, and then if you, and then you'll have your time to come up and you can answer those questions. Demetri Corbin?
Gosh, I thought I was ready, but I'm not. Demetri Corbin, living on the east end of town now, in the middle of an orange grove, so the last presentation was very timely. You've all gotten my emails, so I don't have to go onto those. I do want to update you on my activities, which are being finalized now, if you don't mind. Hello, Mr. Sterling, and I'll just. Now is the time for the Recreation Department to put out their activity guide. So I started in August of this year, being prepared to resurrect the Shakespeare Festival in the Libby Bowl. Everybody's seen this. So this has already been advertised, starting in August, and just when I found out that Mr. Sterling had a proposal before the city council, was when I was finalizing my preparations for next summer's Shakespeare Festival. I do have lined up a world-class theater group to come here, that can sell out the Bowl many times over, and what I've run into is, what I've run into for the last six years, some sort of obstruction to using the Libby Bowl. Everybody knows I teach theater, and I concentrate on fourth, fifth, sixth grade. I did that for a reason, because there used to be many options for high schoolers to come and get higher education in theater. Those options are no longer there. I teach more kids the art of theater in this town than any organization, including OJES. I've done that for 15 years. I teach through the Recreation Department, and I teach directly with the school district, in the school during the day with the classroom teacher. I teach up to 80 students, a five-week program, and they need something to graduate to. Most of the people I teach are now in college, and they're, have many different, you know, opportunities in the entertainment industry because of the base that I teach them. We've been through this over and over. I teach through the Recreation Department. I would not have signed that agreement if I did not have access to the Libby Bowl, because I teach professional skills. Though you may not think so, I am a world-class performer. I have performed in the best theaters in this country. And I teach children, I work with the Rec Department, I work with the school district, offering something that is not here, and I would like, whatever happens with every, whatever management use of the Libby Bowl, that education is not blocked out of it. That is most important, so I won't belabor these things, because you've already got my thoughts. Thank you.
Do you have a specific date already for your Shakespeare?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I wanted to address that. I do have a specific date, and I'm sorry if I might have thrown Sophocles under the bus. He did not mean to tell me to not come to the meeting last week, he just wanted to make sure that I did not say dates, because that could be up in the air, but keep in mind, anything I do is in conjunction with the Recreation Department, which has a deadline to get things done, and with the school district. And I think in all of these things, you all have to realize, this city works on the school district's calendar, whatever you may think. However little children are, or little amount of children are here, everything works on that school district calendar, and that is the calendar that I work on, and that's the calendar that the Recreation Department works on, and you have to keep that in mind.
You just mentioned there's a range then of dates, there's not a specific date?
I put down July 21st through the 31st. That would be the run of the festival. It doesn't have to all be in Libby Bowl. This will be something like the Word Fest. There will be productions going on all over town. So this is something to work with, but keep in mind, one more thing, I can't go too late in the summer because kids get ready to go back to school.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Jamie Bennett?
Hi, my name is Jamie Bennett, I'm the president of the Ojai Music Festival. Thank you for letting me speak. I know we're all grateful to have found a producer, and most likely the right one, but now is not the time to roll over and race through the process of doing the contract. And just because it's a tough business that this man is in, doesn't mean that you shouldn't exercise due diligence. I spent 35 years in the entertainment industry, 20 of it with CBS and the Walt Disney Company doing entertainment contracts. This is not the right contract for you to sign. You're getting $2 a ticket, it goes into a maintenance fund, and that maintenance fund is jointly met with the producer, and that's a good thing, but it's only going to keep the place painted, that's what that's about. You're not getting any rent. What you're going to get rent for is after $30,000. The County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles enter into these contracts all the time. The standard fee is 10% of the gross, 10% of the gross, not the net. This man takes 4% of the gross for a management fee. He's in gross position, you're in net position, the likelihood of you seeing net is very small. I just urge you to get an entertainment lawyer, and he has an entertainment lawyer, he's got somebody who knows the terms, and you should be in a gross position. Give him back the net, say, "Take your 40% over $30,000." You're not going to see that, but there are also a lot of small things in this contract. I could spend 10 minutes telling you about them, I don't have 10 minutes to do it, but I've got concerns throughout the agreement, and our interest is, one, that the city get the right deal, but more importantly for us, this contract still does not reference the pre-existing 24-page contract with the Ojai Music Festival. This is a nine-page contract that never mentions the fact that it needs to be subordinate to the preceding contract that you all signed with the Ojai Music Festival, and there are lots of dates and trips and traps that will make it very difficult for us to coexist unless you write into your contract that he must be aware of, and his contract should have our contract attached to it, saying, "Nothing that is done is done in subrogation to our contract." So, anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you. Scott Wise?
Hello, my name is Scott Wise. Mayor, if it's all possible, I'd like to request a little more than three minutes. I'm not sure I can get through everything, I'll do my best.
Okay.
So in summary, I think the City of Ojai should not grant exclusive rights for booking all events scheduled at the Bowl to SVV. The City of Ojai should slow this process down. Number two, the City of Ojai should develop, through an open, publicized, and thoughtful public process, develop a vision and plan for operation of the Bowl. I think that in the presentation of this contract, that this second step that I'm proposing has been overlapped and set aside. This, there's, I know a great deal of thought has gone into this process, I know a great deal of work has gone into this process, I understand that the arts, and I understand how difficult it is to operate and manage a facility like this. However, there are a number of examples of facilities operating successfully. The City of Thousand Oaks, there's a facility in Oxnard, we have the libero theater, the Granada Theater in Santa Barbara, the City of Ashland, about the size of Ojai, has an incredible arts program going on. Third, the city should have any contract with SVV be reviewed by an attorney and a CPA, and preferably that have entertainment experience. So to address the first issue, the question is whether this, the intent of this contract, is it for it to be a promoter agreement, or someone that is a curator and going to manage the facility? I believe that the Libby Bowl's an incredible and magnificent community asset. It's owned by the city, and is such that the city has stewardship of it. There should be a process in place which allows for the community, both for profit promoters and nonprofit organizations, to use the Bowl. While this agreement may seem like a turnkey option for the city, it's not appropriate for the city to grant exclusive rights, especially for a period of five years, to someone that may be a great promoter, appears to be a great promoter, but is he going to bring ballet? Is he going to bring jazz concert, modern dance, musical theater? As far as the process goes, I think the city should publicize very heavily, talk to all the arts organizations, and perhaps have a committee that works with the city's staff members. members. One of the council members last week mentioned that this, they wanted world-class events to take place here. So I ask, is the city putting assets towards having world-class events here? Is the city taking time to develop personnel to bring world-class events here? Is the city going to take time to invest money in this? And also, what is world-class events? Do we want this to be only Class A organizations? Betty Rittenhour used to have a local community theater group that rehearsed and performed in the Bowl. It was wonderful to go through the Bowl and see that taking place. To address some of the issues on the contract, I've sent some of these before, and looking at it, every time I look at it, I find more things. First of all, exclusive use, as in Section 9A, should not be granted. In a one-year period, should be the maximum. I would ask that SVV bring a list of, somebody else on the council mentioned things, be specific. There should be a specific proposal for specific dates in the year 2016, and attached to that should be a budget, and a list of the artists. When the City Council or the city staff has that, then it should be presented to the City Council for approval or denial, not granting blindly a five-year exclusive contract. The contract says that the SVV intends to invest up to $200,000 in equipment. It does not specify that they have to, it does not talk for any, exactly how that's going to be handled, that equipment. It says that the equipment could be used by others, and they'd be compensated according to the following schedule. It talks about SVV labor cost. Are those on a schedule? Have we seen the SVV labor costs? It talks about applicable facility fees. Have we seen applicable facility fees? Who's going to account for the revenue? If it doesn't go through Ticketmaster, is the city going to have somebody that's keeping track of the revenue that comes in? I did not see, I've read through the contract a couple times, I did not see a commitment that SVV will book any specific number of events in the year 2016. I did not see anything in the contract that prohibits them from having concerts five or seven nights a week. The city, I'm going to wrap up, thank you, thank you for the extra time. The City of Ojai, to conclude, should not grant exclusive rights for booking events at the Bowl. Everybody should have equal opportunity to participate, it should not have to go through SVV. The city should develop an open, publicized process, and they seem like a great organization to be part of this. Let them present as many concerts as they were proposing, without providing them with an exclusive contract after they've brought you a more detailed proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to speak? Now, I will invite Mr. Sterling to the podium. I know that you wanted to answer some questions raised from the public.
Very happy I don't have to do your job. I see, I see the argument on both sides. The Sterling Venue Ventures, I brought my wife here today, we're kind of just a family-owned business, so we are more than happy to help you guys, and invest some money and be able to produce concerts to, you know, and I hear what's said. We, you know, we produce tons, we do ballet, we do dance, we do high schools. If you go to the Canyon Club, or if you do any research, you would know that that's where they have the football awards banquet, that's where the city has their 25th anniversary, we did the 100-year centennial for the Beverly Hills, at our cost. There's a lot of people that spread a lot of non-truths, but we actually enjoy being partners with the people that we, you know, we like being here. We like Ojai. As far as the specifics, I try to show people that, I think that they, the image, people watch a little bit too much TV, and I guess the story about the house nut, if anybody knows that one, it's the, when they used to do concerts and performers, the house nut came from, when they would come up in their bands, the wagons, the owner of the venue used to take the nut off the wheel. And he would take it and hold on to the nut, because the performers would run off with all the money. So that's where they came up with the house nut. To get your nut back, you had to pay what your share. So in our world, it's funny, because we have Paradise Artists, it's one of the largest agencies around, and I deal with them on a daily basis. We have contracts, which I showed some of you, that are 20, 30, 40, 50 pages long. Every single thing that you talk about is minutely done. And so when we have these simple contracts, they're pretty easy, because they're backing up contracts that are 30 pages long. As a promoter, it's called promoter profit, I'm allowed to make 15%. So obviously, if I gave 10% to the city, that would leave me with 5%, and it wouldn't be worth us doing. The $30,000 number that's in there, is it arbitrary? No, it's basically when I start to make money. Because when we come into a situation, people forget that if I'm giving you $2 of the facility fee, that's supposed to be what's paying my box office. So the weird thing about doing business in California, California, is, today I got a visit from the Franchise State Tax Board, where they were basically putting a lien on all of my performers, their house nut, per se, because when they come in, I have to retain 7% of whatever is done. I have to file paperwork to come in. So everybody's got their piece of the pie. The promoters' profit, and you guys can check this, and if you do have an entertainment attorney, or we can ask, the promoters' profit's 15%. That's it. So if you do an event where we bring in someone for $10,000, I'll tell you, I just did Forever Tango, a nice dance thing, and I did Rent. Did everybody know the show Rent?
You just did.
Oh, yeah. So I did a two-week run of Rent. So what it is, is you're contracted out exactly what you're supposed to get, and what's left over, say if you spend, if I pay one of your bands $30,000, that means I am allowed to make $4,500. The $2 facility fee that you're getting is basically, if you sell 2,000 or you sell 1,200 tickets, you now are talking $2,400. So I'm going to front and guarantee a band $30,000, and I'm going to maybe make $4,500. And you can imagine the $30,000 comes in, so if I bring an entire staff out, because to make that money, and I work weekends, the 17, the number of concerts you want, is up to you. Because if you tell me 17 concerts, then I'm going to invest. You have to be able to recoup your investment. I don't have, because all of the other theaters that they spoke of are all funded by, basically, charity organization supplement. I think the Thousand Oaks Civic Square Plaza runs at about a $250,000 loss a year. But if you guys have those donors, I can set up and set you up and organize, and I would love for you to run it, and I'll just come in and do concerts. But obviously, the problem is always going to be, you have somebody just north of you who has access to three, how big is it, 4,000?
Santa Barbara Bowl, yeah.
So you're over 4,000, so we're in competing with a giant that can out-pay everything we do. The bands can walk away with more money, and that business is, you know, it's just bigger, because you're going to be able to make 15% of 4, you know, $400,000. Here, the best you could ever do would be do $100,000 bands, and you may be able to make $15,000. But in the world of your money, I don't think any one of us here wants to risk $100,000 to make 15, and basically work your tail off for three months promoting that. So I am happy I don't do your job. All of the things in the contracts are there. This is a standard contract, is what we had, is we started with a standard contract, and we tried to adapt it. So this is a Saban contract, this is the same as we do everywhere else. And I admit that our expenses for running a 1,200-seat venue are remarkably not a lot different than running a 3,000 or 4,000-seat venue, because you still need a box office, you still need marketing people, you still need a Facebook guy, you still need a Google Zadword guy. And every day I walk into my office and realize I have 200 people that work for me, it makes me get sick inside. So you're running a city, you know what, after hearing that, you know, I can try to help you. I hope that people do research and see what we do do, because... The Shakespeare thing, is he here? I absolutely love that Shakespeare thing. I will take that and bring it to Beverly Hills. You know, because on stuff like that, people eat that stuff up. I love doing that stuff. And we own state-of-the-art sound systems, because the funniest thing in the world is the sound system is designed for the venue. It's not designed for basically what you need and what I need. The, you know, Darkstar Orchestra loved it, but their sound system was not designed. I'm surprised people weren't screaming at you, because they were shooting music all the way across the valley. The proper sound system would be something that is defined right into that. So the sound system that I would pick would be the same sound system as someone else would pick. Mine just happens to be 10 times more expensive, because, and my sound system, when we say it's permanently installed, it's not permanently installed, it lives in a 25-foot truck, and I take it down, because I'm not crazy, I know that someone would steal it. Each speaker is worth like $6,000, $7,000, and if I left it there, it'd be gone. The light bars would be, basically go up and down as we needed them. So I hope you guys make a great decision, and I leave it to you, but I'm here to try to help if you need it, if not, but, you know.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sterling at this point, or do we want to start with the staff?
I think, I mean, let me just, this is not a question, but I just want to lay out kind of the decision environment.
So we'll do a discussion.
And I just want to say, I'm saying, we may have questions that come out of the discussion, is what I'm trying to say. Okay?
Yeah, so we're going to have a discussion, if we have any questions for you, we'll ask you. Yeah. That way you don't, that way you could keep standing, but I, your choice. Well, Councilmember Wirick?
The difficulty is that we have to make a decision about how to handle this community asset, which I believe about $3 million was raised to construct. You know, if you do the math of what community benefit we should have on a 20-year life at 5%, around a quarter million plus a year is what we should be realizing in benefit to the community for that kind of community investment. We're obviously not there, you know? And I'm not saying that's how much actual dollar, I'm just, you know, I'm using general terms. So what I'm, I want to say a few things, and the problem is, is that we first saw this last, in last week's board packet, first time we saw it, on the council. And so there's a lot of issues, as you can see, and I don't, I do not want to, in any way, impugn the work that the Ad Hoc Committee did, or that the city managers did, or that the time you're putting in there, because I think you are, absolutely represent a really great addition to this, you know, to the Libby Bowl environment, certainly potentially. But the problem is, is that we're a bit jammed, you know? We first, there's a lot of issues to discuss here, a lot of...
Since I'm not a politician, I probably don't provide...
Okay.
Since I'm, since I'm not a politician, I'm not asking you to force this. The situation is being forced only because people who know industry know that, I'm good with us waiting a whole year. It doesn't, because right now I'm building a 50,000-square-foot venue, I'm at Disney, I got a lot of going on, that if you want to wait, and if somebody else wants to come and put a bid in, I'm more than happy to work with whoever. But the time constraints people are freaking out about is, they want stuff for next summer. And this is the way it worked. I just booked Happy Together at the Saban, we paid a lot of money, I got the date that I wanted, I'm a happy camper, so, you know...
I'm very aware of that.
I guess, right now, we'll just have a discussion within us, and he's laying his framework of what...
No, I understand that, but it's, and this is what, I want you guys to make a decision, and I want you guys to work within yourself. I'm not, there's no, there's no one saying that you need to do, there's no one saying that you need to make the deal now.
No, yeah, we get it. We're just starting to have a discussion right now, and so we're just going to be talking, and it's going to seem like we're addressing some issues and some concerns, but I think the dialogueage will just happen within the council. Thank you.
So just to finish my thought, you know, for us to first see this last week, and, you know, to really start digging into it, studying it, for the public to be aware of it, this is a big commitment, and it's hard to see how do you resolve this in that short of time. And so I'm just going to lead out with a few comments, and I think others will have some, too. First of all, I agree that, two things, that we should have an entertainment attorney look at something like this, and I believe that we should be having an insurance specialist look at any agreement like this, just as a matter of course. I know my family business deals in this kind of thing all the time, and you don't rely on a general-purpose attorney, for example, to look at indemnification insurance stipulations, you get an insurance specialist to look at things. And I don't think that's been done, and I have learned a lot. These are just things that are part of the vetting and part of the due diligence that we've got to ensure happens. So I understand about the time, but then again, we should have this in plenty, we should have this with enough time to do the due diligence. That's, that's the way it should work. I agree, I have great concerns about the exclusivity. SVV shall have exclusive rights for booking all events scheduled at the Bowl with the following exceptions. I think there's a real issue there, particularly with the Ojai Music Festival. I believe, if I'm incorrect, and you tell me if I'm wrong, sir, I believe your contract allows rights up to 25 days a year?
Yes.
So there's, that's an interesting issue, especially since, I've always wondered, the title on the building is festivals plural, but we have one. I think something more might have been contemplated, things like maybe Shakespeare festivals might have been contemplated at one point, within the 25-day framework. I agree with Mr. Iker. I shy away from any net percentages, because they are just subject to endless problems, interpretations, and I think the important thing is that this, it's no reflection on you, sir, but it's, no matter how well-intentioned both parties are to a contract, the contract should be clear. And I can tell you that when you look at Exhibit B, which I don't know, is as part of everyone's public record, when there's indirect allocations, not just direct allocations, for defining net, when there's things like bonus as an expense, these are things that are not well-defined, and there is a reason why. Most contracts like this that I've been involved with, try to keep the, anything beyond the facility fee, very simple, and that's why you do percentage of gross. Maybe you have thresholds involved to address the issue of adequate profitability, but I'm just saying, that's been my experience, you shy away from nets. $2 per ticket, now, again, it is not just maintenance. This contract as written requires the city to do cleaning of all the restrooms after the meeting, after the events, parking lots outside the event area. We're talking about if we sell all the tickets, I believe it's $2,400. So it's not just the maintenance and repair, it's all the direct variable cost of cleaning outside the event area that's built into this contract. I don't know if that's enough to cover that. Again, it's a question, I just don't know the answer. When we get into a lot of specifics here, you know, there's just, there's just issues. For example, we don't have clarity about who handles the restrooms during the events, has monitor in one section, but not clear who handles... There's monitor in one section, but not clear who handles cleaning the restroom during the event, not just before and after. Little things like that, but that open up the management of this contract to, you know, unnecessary disagreements. I'm going to wind up here in just a minute because I'm, I don't want to overdo my time. But I think that, in general, when we have a list of specific reserved dates, it's problematical, especially in conjunction with the situation with the Ojai Festivals contract. It's better just to submit dates that you want to use ahead of time and not try to be this specific in terms of this event, this event, this event. I understand it addressed a problem in the previous version, but, you know, rule of thumb, keep it simple if you can. Same thing with the artists that should be booked. I think that, yes, you want to have, the city has to have some control over the types of the artists on a rolling, far-forward basis. But again, it should be, it should be simple, as simple as it can be. Little things like on the termination within the first five years in this proposal for the up to $200,000 in sound and lighting equipment. You need to have an exhibit of what that depreciation schedule is, so you know what the termination cost is going to be. Not that there's any intent to do that, you just don't want to have to, you know, be debating that at the time. It should be attached to the contract. Other little things like option to extend, we shouldn't just have approval by City Council without specifying it should be ex ante, as opposed to the City Council being put in a position of saying, "Well, you know, we've gone ahead with this, and so you have to retrospectively approve." It should be defined precisely in terms of ahead of time. So, I'm just saying that the, my comments, from actually sitting down with Mr. Haney and looking at this a long time on Sunday, we talked about it for some time, that's all we can do is just talk one-on-one, not beyond that, by Brown Act, I think reveal that there are some issues that need to be looked at in terms of clarity. I think you're someone we should partner with, but this isn't ready to approve tonight. My feeling.
Comments? No, I have a few comments. Again, they do mirror Councilmember Wierich's comments about specifics, and I do, I come in from a different perspective. I have no experience with any type of entertainment business. I'm a landscaper. I was born in Ojai, and I used to perform on the old Libby Bowl for the Mexican Fiesta. My mom used to hold the picture that we were on in the newspaper, and that's all I remember about Libby Bowl. But with that said, I did look at this original contract with a lot of questions in terms of handling, who's responsible for what. There was a lot of concerns. First of all, concerned that Councilmember Wierich, who's taking care of the facility? Who's not taking care of the facility? It wasn't clear to me if those $2, what they were going to actually cover, because it seemed like we were, the city was, employees were going to take care of outside of the Bowl and the Bowl, just not when there's performance. And does this $2, is that cover the wear and tear of the facilities? In terms of investment, I also, the property access, what improvements are we talking about? How are they going to be discussed? What's the standard? Who's going to bring it up? Is there procedure? Talking about standards and procedure, how do we evaluate if we were to accept this proposal after five years? What are the standards and criteria that we're going to look in terms of evaluating whether we want to continue the contract with Mr. Sterling or with anyone else? Some of my comments. Again, let me see here. Naming rights. City will reimburse SVV for any expenses or income losses SVV incurs as a result of the naming. To me, that's unclear, why we would want that particular stipulation in this contract. And again, I do want to echo Councilmember Wierich. I appreciate the ad hoc committee really looking at this and presenting this proposal to us, but I do see a lot of concerns that are raised, and I do agree with some comments from the public in terms of having an entertainment attorney look at these provisions. And if they are standard, then it does solidify, or does at least give, give the city some type of backup in terms of entering a good contract with Mr. Sterling or anybody else. I have to say, I am impressed by Mr. Sterling's background, but the details that are in this contract, to me, are of great concern in terms of what are we benefiting as a city? More importantly, what are our public benefiting as a community for having this promoter come into town? That's what I look at it. I have a lot of questions that are open-ended, again, because I think that we need to look at this a little bit more further, whether Mr. Sterling is still willing to work with us in this, in this proposal. Personally, I'd rather have had a RFP done, just because I've been saying this since the beginning, I think our community is very involved with any issue that goes on. And putting it out there for public comment from the beginning would only benefit us as a city. But I agree with Councilmember Wierich. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of clarity. And for me, I'd rather have our entertainer attorney look at all these agreements in order to get some type of validation, in my point of view. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I've got some comments. There's only one thing that I've heard tonight from the speakers and from council that I agree with, and that should be that there should be a specific reference to the Music Festival contract. I don't know whether, it seems to me that the contract took into consideration the Music Festival. It also took into consideration the tennis tournament. It took into consideration several city-sponsored or nonprofit dates that were unavailable to Mr. Sterling. So, I'm not sure what the problem is with that. Having been involved in entertainment and sports law for the first 10 years of practice, I don't have any objections to this contract. And I'm a lawyer, and lawyers typically want every single I dotted and T crossed. But sometimes you have to take a look at the situation, as we did six years ago, when there was public and there was people in the council that didn't even want Libby Bowl to be renovated, not even started renovating, until every single dollar was in the bank in order to do it. And fortunately, the council elected to have the city underwrite the pledges that we had gotten, and that was the sound thing to do. It was the proper thing to do, and every single pledge was paid. If we'd stuck around waiting for it, it probably never would have happened. I don't even think we'd have the Music Festival here now, because we wouldn't have a venue for it. Well, here we are, sitting with a situation where we're either going to select somebody to promote the Libby Bowl for the upcoming season, or we're not. So, if we elect not to do it, fine. I'm just one vote on the council. But if we don't do it now, we might as well hang it up for the next season. And we'll bring it back, you know, during the, during the year, or this time next year, and decide what we're going to do. But I, for one, will vote not to spend one dime on Libby Bowl during this process. I don't know who's going to manage it. I don't know who's going to organize to have the nonprofits in there. I don't know who's going to do anything when it comes to Libby Bowl, because we don't have the resources for it. This is an opportunity that we have that is going to generate some income to the city. Now, things like cleaning bathrooms and garbage, we do that anyway. We're out there, we have to clean the bathrooms on a regular basis, at any rate. And I don't believe that there's been a great deal of extra work for any of the concerts that we've had there in terms of cleaning bathrooms, or the tennis tournament. We're doing it for all those. So, I don't see why this one's any different. I think it's time that we began to have some entertainment in the Bowl. And I think that the Sterling proposal does it. It doesn't have every I dotted and every T crossed, perhaps, but we're going to go through a learning curve with it. We don't even know whether Mr. Sterling's going to be able to make it successful or not. But I think we've got the best opportunity to bring people into town for events in the Bowl. We don't want to disrupt anything we're doing in the Bowl now. He's a very successful venue promoter, and I think we just need to make a decision on it. Obviously, I'm only one voice, but that's the way I feel.
Councilmember Haney?
Well, I, Mr. Sterling, I just want to say, thanks for sitting here and listening to all this. It's, it's early, actually, for us. It's only 20 to 9:00. You know, I sat on this ad hoc committee, too. And I'm, you know, I came from the sense that we had a previous committee, and for four years, I didn't feel they did anything regarding any valued entertainment for this It's not to say they didn't work hard, it's not to say they didn't try, but the reality was, we didn't have anything come to our community. So, when I sat, when I initially sat in on this ad hoc committee, I could agree with everything that Paul just said. I was 100% behind finding somebody. I was 100% behind finding somebody soon. I was 100% behind finding someone reputable, and you meet all that criteria. And then, once it starts being vetted and the community starts interacting, that's when the brakes go on, that's when the woes come out, and that's when you really have to look at things from a different perspective. I still want to be your partner. I want to make that clear. And I think everyone here wants to be your partner. I think what we want to do is slow the process down. What we want to do is review this contract and make sure it's a sound contract for both parties. And from my perspective, it has to be a sound contract for this community. It has to be a sound contract for all of the members that utilize the Bowl, from Mr. Bennett here and the Music Festival, to the other nine historic things that we have here, and Dimitri in the Recreation and Parks Department having access. There's just a lot of things that I believe we need to take a step back and look at. Once we do that, then I think we'll be able to make the best decision. And I'd like that best decision to be with you. However, out of this discussion and out of a little more review, that may be something that you may not want to do. And I'm hoping that it's not. I'm hoping that we can figure out how to partner with you. I have some of the same concerns regarding, well, William and I sat down and talked about them on Sunday. You know, I'm not sure about the profit sharing. I would think if you're getting your 4% on the front end, maybe we get our 4% on the front end. Not being in your industry, I don't know what's appropriate and what isn't. Again, going back to the ad hoc committee, our city manager's not an entertainment attorney and probably hasn't written anything regarding entertainment contracts or understands entertainment law. I know our city attorney probably doesn't have a background in that. I didn't know Paul did, but we didn't really champion Paul's past practices. I know that Steve didn't, McCleary, the other person on the ad hoc committee, didn't have any experience in this, and I, for sure, as a landscape contractor, have no clue as to what's a sound contract for something of this nature in this music industry. So, I hope I'm not speaking too fast. I'm just saying that we need to take a step back, and I think, and I think if we, if, I'm not looking, Paul, at a six-month step back, I'm not looking at a six-year step back. I'm looking at a minimum, coming back in January or February, and having this reviewed, and having it put out into the public arena once or two more times, get a little more feedback, and then we can finalize something. That's what I'm looking for. And I hope you're willing to work with us on it. And again, you're not holding the gun to our head, we're holding the gun to our head. Does that make sense? You're not pushing this deal. I've never felt you pushing this. I felt the push coming from inside. It's internal. We'd like to see this venue become something great. And we're just, we've got to figure that out and how to do that right. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just comment briefly? I look at this as pushing it back at least a year. I don't think there's any way you can cut it. Once we get past January, February, they're not going to be able to put anybody in the Bowl this summer. So, as long as we're all willing to live with that, that's fine. But then, who's going to manage the Bowl? I think you ought to just shut it down. Shut the thing down until we can vet everything, and we'll have to find another promoter who may want to bid against Mr. Sterling, who's going to have his own set of contracts. That's fine. But I think we have to realize that we're going to go who knows how much longer. We've gone too long, as far as I'm concerned now, with that Bowl being totally unproductive, except for our special events. And if we're willing to do that, then we're willing to do it. But we can't say we're putting the brakes on for a month or two, because if we put the brakes on for a month or two, that's going to lose the 2016 season. And if council elects to do that, then fine. But we're not, let's not be all surprised when nothing happens for the next year there.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah. Councilmember Haney, then. Councilmember Clapp?
Again, Paul, I heard you clearly, but again, who's got the gun to their head? We do. We, you know, we spent four years waiting for something to happen, and it didn't happen. And now what we're doing is we're rushing in to get something to happen, and I'm just not sure, and again, I sat on this committee, I wanted it to happen, but I'm just not sure that, that that's where we are right now. We haven't even discussed parking. You know, we have 20 events a year, now we're going to add 17 to it. We're going to impact our community, and not just, not just the people surrounding the Bowl. Law enforcement will be impacted, pretty clear. Our maintenance staffs are going to be impacted. I mean, we're going to be impacted in so many different ways. And just taking a step back and recognizing what they are and how we can enhance our ability to deal with them is in our best interest. And I hope it doesn't take a year, I really do. I really hope it doesn't. But we've got to review this, and we've got to do this right. And we've got to address the concerns that have been brought up by the public, as well as the other users of the facility. And I think we can do this in a continuum with the ad hoc committee, if you're willing to sit on it. I think we can meet, and we can, we can get this hammered out, and I think, again, we can do this in a timely manner.
Councilmember Clapp?
I have scrawled all over my paperwork here. I'm probably going to be somewhat incoherent, but please bear with me. First of all, I didn't even know this ad hoc committee existed. I didn't know they were meeting. Council's group never had a discussion about how to proceed with the Libby Bowl operations. The Libby Bowl Foundation pulled out of their agreement not that long ago. I see us up against another NEF lounge, quite frankly, and we all saw what Mr. Dunn said about his feelings around us and our being pressured into making a decision. And I don't care where the pressure's coming from, but we feel it up here. I don't want to be pushed into another NEF lounge. If the Bowl has to sit for another year with no events, in order to avoid another NEF lounge, I will be happy, fine with that. So, one of the, one of the things within this contract that isn't even discussed is security or alcohol, how that's going to be handled. That's a concern for me. We have no experience, personal experience with Mr. Sterling's organization, so entering into a five-year contract, exclusive contract, makes me very uncomfortable. The original EIR for the Libby Bowl was not based in the increased use that was anticipated with the remodel. This is something that concerned me originally with the remodel, when it's brought before Parking has, parking and traffic has not been addressed. It certainly will have an impact upon the community. The other stakeholders within the community were not included in this current discussion. That's clear. I think that that was a big mistake. And... And there's another issue, and I was sitting today mulling this over, and this is about the community as a whole and the, in the, in our communities, the citizens that have to live here in, in a community that is becoming more and more dominated by tourism. I understand that tourism brings, uh, money to our community, which is important, but also I think it needs to be balanced, and the intensity of, of that tourism needs to be balanced in order to maintain the quality of life within the community for the citizens that live here. And I think we're at a, we're at a tipping point with that. More and more people are coming before, coming up to me on the street and saying, "Man, this is just gotten crazy around here, this, it's just too, too impacted all the time with tourism." I think everything needs to be balanced, and I think that we're, we're kind of tipping into an imbalance right now with, with this. So, all in all, I think that we really need to slow down, look at this a little more thoroughly, invite the other stakeholders in to this, uh, discussion, getting, uh, entertainment lawyer involved so that we make sure that we don't make any major mistakes in our contract. I, for one, uh, don't mind being really, really thorough in a contract. I think that, uh, that's what they're for, they're to try to, as best as possibly can, anticipate problems and ir the mount prior to, prior to, um, entering into an agreement, and, and I think that this contract lacks that kind of thoroughness. So, I, I would, uh, prefer delaying this and, uh, making sure that we do it in a way that benefits everyone, the, uh, current stakeholders, the whoever we enter into an agreement with, and also balance it with our, the livability of our community, for the people that live here. And, as, in closing, I'm really uncomfortable with, uh, an event, seventeen or eighteen or nineteen events crammed into a very narrow window in, in town. I think that that would just make the city unlivable for your average person in the community.
After hearing the discussion within the council members, um, I think there's obviously preference in slowing down this process, but what that means is still up in the air, in my point of view. Because I, even though I, I definitely agree in slowing down the process, I do think Mr. Sterling has the ability to work with the city. And my first request would be to have an attorney review these conditions. Now, it's, it's understandable if Mr. Sterling doesn't want this, or can't do it for whatever reason, um, extend reviewing this agreement, then that's, I mean, that's, that's ultimately his decision, and I respect that. But I think it's his, his best interest to really look at the nuts and bolts of all this, whether it delays us, and if it does, if he, if he doesn't want it, look at all the fine detail and our concerns and what the citizens have, have, uh, requested us to look at, then I think it's back to the drawing board. And, and my, my personal preference would be to keep those nonprofits' events going, uh, however we can. Let's go back to the drawing board and seeing what we have to do to get that started. But I personally think that, uh, he could be the potential person for us, but, uh, it would be up to the ad hoc committee to go back, find this, uh, in my opinion, go back to ad hoc committee, find an attorney, and review these terms, and then come back to the council and put it back to the community with ample time to review them. Whether, I don't know how long that will take, I know Mayor Pro Tim Blatts has experience doing this, but it's my gut feeling that we do need to take a step back, look at this in more detail, and, and possibly renegotiate if, if Mr. Sterling is wanting to, and go back from there. If, if not, then go back to the drawing board and see what, what else, what, what other things, whether options there are for us to look at. With that, then I'll entertain any comments or motion.
Mayor, I just like to clarify, um, one thing. Mr. Sterling's contract was going to be for his seventeen events. Mr. Sterling was not going to manage the bowl and was not going to manage our other, um, events that occurred there. We were going to have to hire a part-time staff in-house to do that. So, that was, that was, that, um, I, I don't know where the impression, uh, was put out there that Mr. Sterling's managing the bowl for the entire year. He's, he, his contract is for seventeen events, or whatever the number of events that we agreed to, but he's not going to manage the bowl, we're going to still have to hire a part-time person to do that.
Yeah, and that was actually one of my concerns, I didn't see, I, it wasn't clear in the staff report how that responsibility was divided. And now that you said that, the only concerning part is some of that language gives him exclusive access, and he's the one that says, when, if, if an organization was to come and request a date, it would have to be with the provisions of his approval. So, that, that, to me, that, that kind of language is contradicting, and, and would be something to work out. I'm not saying it can't be worked out, I'm not saying it, but it, it just, to me, in my head, that's contradicting language and knowing.
Well, I just want to say that, and, and those are some of the small things that had, that, the verbiage of that would have to be worked out. My question to, uh, Mr. Sterling is, what's the latest date that you feel comfortable, that you could actually put something on, um, that you feel meets your standards and would, could meet the community's standards? What would be the latest date that we could get back to you with?
In, in general, I mean, listening to what you guys are going through, and I can see you're going through something, that, um, that, that, someone said different perspectives, and you're right, on the, I hear that there's completely disagreement, you know? I was coming in, and I kind of was brought in because of the downtown businesses want to generate revenue. I see that they don't, you don't want revenue, or you don't want added, uh, traffic down there, so with all-
Collective statement, that's a statement of one person.
Oh, I understand that, but that's why I said from, from different perspectives. I, managing all these perspectives, I'm looking at this, this, and I can tell you, I wrote all of it until I got to a point, and I was like, "This is simple. You need to hire me, Nederlander, Live Nation, a reputable company to manage the bowl for you. Pay me a hundred thousand dollars a year, and I'll bring you shows." That, that's kind of what you need, because you can tell me what to do. I think you think I'm going to tell you what to do. I, I, it's not my bowl. I was only doing it to protect, because, trust me, this is the way it works. I do a show, I'm very successful, very cocky, I'm going to be successful, I will draw twelve hundred people every single time, and Nederlander will find that out, House of Blues will find that out, Live Nation will find that out. They'll be at your doorsteps in two seconds, willing to pay you hundreds of thousands of dollars to get rid of me. That, that's my perspective on it. On the contract, I didn't want to give you a percentage of any profits. I wanted to give you just a set fee per ticket. You, you understand, so, a lot of what you're talking about, the revenue, there's no concert venue that's owned by a city entity that makes money, because the people that make money would be the bars, the restaurants. There is no liquor license, so that's the very simple thing, there's not addressed, because there's no liquor license. And that, it means it's not profitable for me to hire police officers if I'm going to hire police officers, get people drunk, and give the money to somebody else. That makes no sense. So, the funniest thing is, Mr. Clark, we've gone back and forth at nauseam, and when I listen to everybody here, they act like this is just a quick contract. No, it wasn't, every topic that you're talking, because when you're speaking, you're speaking in statements. And the, and the reporter from the Ventura was just called me today, and he was amazed that you guys, everybody was coming together and actually going to do something. And to me, you need to just hire someone to tell them what to do, but, listening, I don't know what you want to do, so it's scaring me to do an event or to represent, because I'm a failed performer. I would love to have performed, but I can't, so I promote people who do perform. You can make money on food and beverage, so my suggestion is, just hire someone for a set salary and tell them what you want to do, because even when I came in, they originally told me you had fifty thousand dollars to put lights in, and you had a hundred thousand dollars to put sound in, then go down that path and hire someone. You know, so, I, you know, for me, I, I will work with you, but it seems I don't know what you want, because it-
Chair. Uh, Mr., Councilmember Wyrick first had his, his hand, and then the Councilmember Clapp.
Is that all right? Counselor, okay. Look, the bottom line is, I, I, you know, you were asked a specific question by Councilman Haney, I, I heard a lot of stuff, I didn't hear a precise answer, but that's, I understand your point. Bottom line is, our job is to deliberate. We haven't had time to deliberate. Our job is to define the goals and purposes of this bowl and what we want to achieve. We haven't done that. We haven't debated that and come to an understanding of what goals and purposes we seek to achieve. That's our job. And so, in terms of, I think, this contract, it's, 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 again, it's kind of jumped the gun, because it has, it, it hasn't stemmed from that first. And when we don't have a limit, an upper limit on intensity of use in the contract, when parts of, uh, the, uh, Libby Park can be, uh, closed arguably without any particular upper limit, if you say you're preparing for use, without defining what that is, and when there's been, we have not forwarded this to our insurance carrier, the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, to review, that's just basic. And so, again, I, I think we're in a situation here where, um, we haven't been properly systematic, and we need to.
Councilmember Clapp?
I have something real similar to say. This is, this is back to what I said originally, I didn't even know about a hot ad hoc committee meeting. This discussion didn't come before the full council, so this, you, I apologize that this has gone this far without the entire council ever having a discussion before we even went out and solicited anybody. I think that was a huge mistake. I think, I, but we have to back up now and do it right, and, uh, that's why I want to delay it, and I have to apologize again. I didn't even know the ad hoc committee even existed. I don't even know where it came from. Usually, we decide that here at the di, at the dais, who's going to be on an ad hoc committee for a discussion? This appeared out of nowhere. If it was the ad hoc committee that was from the original Libby Bowl Foundation negotiations, ad hoc committees are supposed to not be a permanent standing committee, so it, it was exhausted after that negotiation. So, this, this whole thing is just a mess, but we have to back up and, and do it right now. So, again, I apologize.
So, I'll bring it back to council and see where we want to go with this. I mean, I had put in a proposal with potentially looking, having an attorney review this contract, hearing comments from Mr. Sterling, maybe the best approach would be to hire somebody so we could direct them on how to manage the bowl. Regardless, I, I, I mean, it's up to the council to see if they want to, uh, direct staff to look into an attorney, or, I mean, I, I guess my, my first question is, is, uh, if we're all happy to look at this in more detail, or if we want to go back to the drawing board and decide what our goals are. Councilmember Wyrick?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I could jump in shortly bef- Sorry to jump ahead of you, Councilmember. The council might consider this in a two-step process, the first decision being, would you like to continue with the negotiator, negotiation of this contract with Mr. Sterling, provided, of course, he continues to willing to negotiate shooting for January, February? Or two, would you want to set that back on the table, perhaps through a RFP, a workshop, go back to the ad hoc committee to figure out, do you want to do a more broad-based public input approach, as has been suggested by some of the public, first? Then, if you would like to do the RFP approach, the ad hoc committee could put together an RFP, go that route, that I think would certainly take at least a year, in terms of getting the scheduling for how concert events schedule. Alternatively, if you wanted to continue negotiations on this contract with Mr. Sterling, again, assuming he's willing to do so, then you should decide whether you'd like to have an entertainment attorney look at the contract. I think that isn't a bad idea. I'm a city attorney, not an entertainment attorney. I've looked at the contract from a contracts, a contracts lawyer's perspective, but I'm not an entertainment attorney, don't claim to be. We can certainly find someone who I think would be good and recommend that person to you. In addition, you'll, of course, have your contacts, and that could be a decision made, perhaps council directs us to find an attorney, to then be vetted by the city manager and the ad hoc committee.
So, we have two options on the table, any of the-
I'd like to throw a third option out there.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I think absolutely valid, I want to throw a third one out that maybe not is mutually exclusive. And that is, since the very first time that I even contemplated running for this office, I started meeting people who were really talented and really knowledgeable about this industry in this community. And it just struck me that where have we solicited, properly solicited, the public for their ideas on, um, what is the, the challenge we have with the Libby Bowl and how best to handle it? When's the last time that was done? Years ago, I believe. And I hate unnecessarily slowing things down, but I've been really impressed by some of the people who are coming here tonight and their knowledge, and their understanding, and there's other people that aren't here. I, I would like to just throw as a third option out that we've got, we have some sort of opportunity, I hate to use that word, used word, workshop, but nevertheless, per, you know, perhaps it's time that we have a, where, you know, we, we're not allowed to kind of just sit and, and talk about this amongst ourselves with, uh, people in the industry about, you know, brainstorming what's the best way to handle the situation. I would love to find a structured way to do that, um, in terms of trying to define a vision and goals for this community and this facility.
And a workshop in open session would certainly be the way to do that. Of course, the council unfortunately can't meet in closed session, um, on this particular item.
But I just, I just wonder if we, we might want to try to think about fitting in, this is a pretty important asset, defining the identity of this community, and I think a lot of people who know a lot and have a lot of experience perhaps feel they haven't had a chance to voice and give, uh, give voice to their expertise on this matter.
Right, we have three options on the table, so, do we, are we leaning towards one? Do you want to hear a motion towards one, or, and see if it passes? But I think we've had enough dialogue and conversation to kind of get, to kind of understand where we're at and where we want to approach things.
I think we maybe need a combination.
Which combinations are you thinking of?
Well, I think we need to go back to square one and have some sort of, either a focus group with the stakeholders, or a community workshop, which would probably be better, because, um, it doesn't involve the whole community, it impacts the whole community. So, I think that's where we need to start. And that's the foundation that we need to develop before we know how to proceed.
And I think that's implicit in, in, in your challenge to us. What are our goals and purposes, first? And how, what other method is there to do that, other than we try to schedule a session where we all, as a community, discuss this in as structured a fashion as possible, as soon as possible? And that doesn't necessarily mean stopping vetting this particular contract for things like insurance issues and, and what exactly exclusive rights mean, and that would help inform the workshop.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mayor Pro Tim Blatts, then you could comment after. Mayor Pro Tim Blatts?
Mayor Proten Blatts?
I think that, that before we decide what we got, we have to do, and I don't know what Mr. Sterling's about to say, but I see no reason to continue negotiating the contract with Mr. Sterling at this point, particularly if we're going to start doing workshops and that kind of thing. But I think we have to, as a council, understand what the cost is going to be. So, I think that before I could be prepared to vote for anything tonight, I have to have this come back to me with a cost as to how much we're going to be spending on Libby Bowl just to manage it from the small amount that we're going to have to manage it, how much the workshops are going to cost in terms of staff time, if we're going to have to get a facilitator for it, how much it's going to cost to have an entertainment attorney perhaps draft a, a contract after the workshops are over. But I know there's going to be a cost, is there not? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
And what, do you have any estimate of what the cost is going to be and where that cost would come from?
So, so really, you know, the model that the foundation has been following has been pretty much what you're talking about. You know, they've had a few produced events, but for the most part, they've been community events and the events that you want to see to continue. So, I'd say eighty thousand.
Okay. And where do we have in the budget to spend eighty thousand on it this year?
You have to, we, we set aside fifty thousand. We spent some of that to manage the bowl during October, November, after the foundation was finished. So, there's a small amount left, so you'd probably have to budget another forty or so thousand.
Yes, Mr. Sterling, you had a comment?
For me, I hope I didn't come across incorrectly. I am telling you, if you tell me what you want, I can try to help you. I, I don't have an issue with that. I just see in the council, that's why I'm such a hideous politician, because I have no idea, because I usually am trying to read where I'm supposed to go. I don't know where I'm supposed to go. So, on this one, if you tell me what you want, because I, I see that, but this is a, to answer you, I didn't mean not to answer you. As time goes on, the pick of the litter goes away and we're not going to get happy together. And I can give you an example, last year I waited too long and I, and I was begging for it and he was going to give me a Tuesday. And I'm like, I'm not doing, spending that kind of money on a Tuesday.
It's highly grossing.
Yes.
You know, you're not familiar with it.
But, you know what I mean? I told, I talked to Todd Rundgren, I've talked to a bunch of my friends, and they are excited about the, you know, I, I tell them this is just like my Woodstock where I grew up. This is Woodstock and I can see what you guys have. So, as time goes, I lose those people. But Terry Non lives here. There's, there's entertainment we can do. But I want everybody to realize in my world, I see you are sitting on a six million dollar asset. And if you do not use it, or it's not managed correctly, you will destroy that six million dollar asset very quickly. Because I can see right now, someone needs to take those screens down, someone needs to do something with that, otherwise you're going to have, the wind is coming, the rain's coming, there's stuff all over the place. Someone needs to be paying attention to what's going on there. And it is a huge asset. It protected. But in the next breath, my wife and I were talking about how there was a Libby Bowl in Central Park and no one managed it, no one did anything with it. It was, a janitor did it and it, and it's that famous one when you watch Hair. It's the one that's just open to everybody, concrete seats and people have fun and it's, and everybody loves it there. You can do that with it, too. And once somebody wants to use it, just get up and use it.
Right. All right, so I'll bring it back to council. I, I think that it's, it's clear where council kind of wants to go, in my opinion, and I'll take a stab at it, is to, it's to begin a workshop with stakeholders in the community to identify our goals and our objectives and, and to see where, how we could best manage the bowl. And, and I would go further in seeing if we could start adding some, some certain times or certain dates so we could get this process going. That would be my, my stab at a motion. Yes, councilmember Wyrick?
You may cringe at this, but this is important.
Yes.
And I think we should, we should challenge ourselves and the community. We have a fair amount of time after the first meeting where we organize in December. I know it's starting to push the Christmas season, but I think we ought to look at December, January. Find, find a time.
For the workshop?
No.
Yes, I do.
I think that that's a real mistake.
I don't think we should delay.
I think that that's another Neff Lounge situation.
We're talking about-
We're cramming, but I think cramming a workshop in, during the holiday season is a real mistake. It's a stressful time for everyone. People's minds are distracted.
About January?
It's just, I much, I think that'd be much more productive.
That's what I'm saying, December or January.
Yeah, I think, I think, put it after the first of the year.
So, I think we choose a time in January then, if possible?
So-
And we try to, and I don't think we need a facilitator. I don't, I think-
I don't either.
We just need a venue for people to come together and talk about this because we know we have a high level of expertise in the community and we haven't had this discussion.
Mr. Clark?
So, so I think if you, if you just want to have a community workshop, come one, come all, make your comments, that's fine. The, the concern I have is that our knowledge of what's feasible is limited. And a lot of times, these kinds of workshops are just wish sessions and send you off in a direction that can't be fulfilled. So, I think somehow, and I don't know how off the top of my head, whatever we do needs to be informed by some sense of reality of what really can be done.
Absolutely.
Because I think, because I think with, you know, with the Libby Bowl Foundation and with many, many other proposals that we've had along the way, they're, you know, they sound nice, but they're not based in reality of what the, of what the commercial realities are of this particular venue.
And that the reality needs to be documented, presented, and the people that know of this that go, sir, I will yield to him.
Yeah. Just finish our comments, then we'll go-
I, I think, I think that, absolutely, we need the documentation, the education, and then challenge those that are knowledgeable about these kinds of matters in the community to come forward and work with us. And so, we all understand what the options are.
Councilmember Haney, and then I'll go to Mr. Bennett.
What I would like to do is, for Betsy's concerns, is put the ad hoc committee out here in public, so you know who it is. And it was Paul, myself, the city manager, assistant city manager. And what I would like to do, if Paul's willing to do it, is to enlarge the ad hoc committee to some of the players in this community. One would be the director of the Libby Bowl. One would be someone from the Recreation and Parks Department. Someone might be from the entertainment industry. But we can bring a beg, a bigger picture of the users and players of this community. Bring them to the ad hoc committee. Let the ad hoc committee write the guidelines as to how to address the use of this facility. Take it to a public workshop, get our public input, and then at that point, bring it back to the vendors that would like to bid on this project.
Amen.
May I suggest also have a member of the citizen at large as well?
Absolutely.
Citizen at large as well. I'm sorry.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. I'll make this quick. I, I think the idea of doing a workshop is an interesting one. I would suggest, however, that you bring in someone with expertise, preferably an attorney, but not necessarily, but somebody who's negotiated venue contracts before. So, you can understand the economics of the other side and you can understand, for instance, when you say, oh, we want ten percent of the gross. And by the way, there are a whole lot of venues out there that get ten percent of the gross as the rent. They have a facility fee to keep, to take care of the trash and paint things. But if, when you ask for ten percent of the gross and the, and the promoter can give away tickets to the acts as a form of contr- compensation, it takes from the gross. So, if you look at the Hollywood Bowl contract, it's ten percent of the projected gross, the, what can be. And so, you really have to be smart or you, you can find yourself rolled. You could say, oh, okay, well, ten percent of the gross. But if it's not the projected gross, you can give away five percent of the gross in tickets to the, to the act as a form of compensation and you're really denying yourself that. So, I just think having somebody who has expertise in, in venue contracts on both sides to help you guide, guide you through what the trade-offs are so you get the behaviors you want. And that's it. I mean, it's, you can come up with a grand scheme and you wind up with the wrong behavior if you don't, if you don't understand it.
Thank you. Mayor Proten Blatts first and then-
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I don't know what direction we're going in right now. I don't even know that we're ever going to have a promoter in here. So, I think having somebody come in and talk about promotion contracts is totally premature at this point. If we're going to get the community in, and involved in the way that it's going to be handled through Park and Recreations, and I'm not against community input, but we don't know what we're going to end up with. We may end up with absolutely no promoted shows, except an occasional one here and there. The Park and Recreations Department may take over Libby Bowl. We don't know where we're going to go at this point. I mean, I think that ad hoc committee is great, but why do we do it? We had an ad hoc committee. It didn't work. I think that the best thing to do is just have the council discuss it all in open session. Have workshops, have people come in and tell us what they think. And how we're going to bring that to a consensus is beyond me. I think we have to look at what we have from a facility standpoint. It's a venue that, that absolutely demands promotion. And despite all the expertise, talents that we had on the Libby Bowl Foundation, and I respect the talents of all those people, and if you look at their resumes, they're sterling, they're, they're really sterling. And they couldn't do it. So, I don't know why we're kidding ourselves, thinking that we're going to be able to. But nonetheless, we have a bowl to run with no, with no foundation that's willing to lose eighty thousand dollars a year to run it for the rest of 2016. And we, as a, we as a council, have to realize we're going to have to spend the money to do it. And that's the part that I think before we decide to do anything, we need to appropriate the funds to run Libby Bowl for whatever it's going to be for this upcoming year. Because we can sit here and talk about this for another two or three years and maybe never get a consensus.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I heard something of a motion from councilperson Haney in terms of building on the focus, on the ad hoc group to a focus group to a workshop to see what we might be able to achieve. I, I'm, I understand where councilperson Blatts is coming from, but I, I, I still don't want to throw out that we may come up with, that process may come up with things that we don't anticipate, that, that could be quite beneficial. So, if you're not willing to make a motion, I will.
Don't go forward.
I heard something of a motion, I was, from you.
Well, I couldn't repeat what I just said. I just, those were thoughts that were coming to my mind, but I'll try it. I, I'm not sure how, how this is going to come out. But again, the, I don't know if it's a resurrection or if it's an acknowledgement of an existing ad hoc committee. And if Mr. Blatts and, and the city manager and assistant city manager were willing to partake in that, then I would like to move that we add five additional members to it. One, if we can, from the entertainment industry. One, if we can, from the Ojai Music Festival. One, from the Recreation and Parks Department. And I'd go further and have two at-large community members join us. So, if that's, if that's the motion, Mr. Attorney?
Would that, would that motion include just a friendly question, inquiry about having a workshop organized by that focus group?
Yes.
I would just, I would like to add, Mr. Mayor, that if we're going to have several members on the ad hoc committee, that at least one member from the Chamber of Commerce or the Visitors Bureau be one of those members as well.
Yes. I, if, is that motion amenable to a second?
I think so. I have two clarification questions that will help answer that question. One being, you had mentioned at one point, Councilmember Haney, that you'd be in favor of the ad hoc committee being out in the public. Is that the plan, that this ad hoc committee would meet in public or meet in private? And two, the workshop, of course, would be the whole council in public as is required, just to clarify that.
I envision the ad hoc committee meeting in private.
Okay.
So, and, and then generating the public workshops out of it.
Are we ready for a second?
I think you are.
I will second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Clapp? Yes. Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes. I just want to say, Mr. Sterling, I appreciate your willingness to come and work with the city of Ojai. And in the future, whatever comes out of these workshops and these, this ad hoc committee, I hope you can still keep us in mind. And, and the best for your endeavors with Disney and everything else that you're doing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if, do you want to take a five-minute break real quick and regroup? And then we'll talk about the fence walls and hedges and then the-
You already have one vote already.
Yes. Five-minute break. Five-minute break.
We'll give you a call.
Yeah, that'd be good. I love that stuff.
Okay.
...called the Urban Street Design Guide, and there are probably other organizations that do this thing, but this is certainly relevant as a National Association of City Transportation officials. And this is just one very small part, dealing with intersections, but it's particular with site visibility. And they talk about in determining the site distance triangle, use the target speed rather than design speed. And they talk about if you have fixed objects such as trees, we could say hedges, deemed to inhibit the visibility of a given intersection, I read this before, and create safety concerns, they say it should not be removed without the prior consideration of alternative safety mitigation measures. And I think we ought to reference a guide like this to put, and I would suggest, put something in the ordinance to do with our alternative safety mitigation measures. And already it allows a not, you can exceed 36 inches approved by the director, that's already in our code. But I think we could explicitly allow alternative mitigation measures which could include four-way stop signs, for example. Could include curb extensions, controversial, but nevertheless an alternative. And I think, the point being is, I think that, and I want to make this my most general point. We added over, almost 150 pages by my count in '04 to the zoning code, in 2004. None of us were here then. But think about, I have noticed a pattern here. These problems tend to go back to that massive increase in our zoning code in '04. We've been having them again and again and again. And I think we need to maybe adopt a different philosophy as we try to address these one-size-fits-all situations towards opening up to allow neighborhood planning by things like language that is referenced in something like this for alternative mitigation measures. And that's the direction I'd like to give.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Clapp?
Yeah, I see here on, I apologize, I see on page two, under the bold existing, it says, "Lower speeds at urban intersections within sufficient site distances. Low speeds yield smaller site triangles." And I know the discussions about speeding through town are, you know, we talk about a lot, and I think we should consider lowering speed limits.
It's a mitigation measure.
Right.
Any other comments before open public comment? I have member speakers cards. Jerry Dunn?
Hi, Jerry Dunn from the city of Ojai. And parenthetically, I've gotten a couple of texts from people at home trying to watch this live, and apparently they're getting the school board meeting from last week. So I don't know if that's something you can fix.
They're getting a school board meeting from today, right?
Because we changed our meeting.
Uh huh. Okay. Oh, great. If it's usually live.
It will be televised later on during the week.
Okay.
And just to note for the record, that the fact that the meeting is not going to be televised tonight, but rather will be televised later on, does not violate the Brown Act.
I'm glad to see that my points, really, and I only have two, have been brought up. One thing, though, is I think since this covers hedges, walls, and fences in the code, I'd encourage you to think of hedges as being different from walls and fences. Walls and high fences make a very un-Ojai statement. You know, they're exclusion, unfriendliness, exclusivity, while green hedges harmonize with the natural setting of the Ojai Valley and make it beautiful. So we don't want to become the San Fernando Valley. I'd like to see the code favor natural hedges and encourage greenery. Second, if there's a documented safety concern in a corner, and I mean documented, use every conceivable alternative approach before making homeowners chop their hedges. Now, you've mentioned that. This includes moving stop signs to their proper location. If this had been done, this one simple step would have kept several families, several homeowners, property owners, from having to cut down their hedges during the period before the moratorium. If you look, there's a stop sign and there's a stop line. And the stop sign is sometimes here, but the stop line you actually have to move up and stop at according to the DMV gives you full vision in every direction. So that's something to consider. And at all costs, you know, blindly enforcing a code is not a great idea, and I'm glad to see that you're open to changing it and making it better. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Steve Quilisi?
Thank you, Mayor Lara, members of the council and staff. I think those of you that know me well know that my general philosophy, my basic philosophy is to leave people alone and let them do what they want with their own stuff. And that, in general, includes hedges, walls, and fences. Where public safety is a problem, I think we need to do something. But again, as several people have said, there are alternatives to cutting down hedges. Those could include all-way stops, they could include a number of other things. But I think we need to look beyond the implied, let's make it safe so that one car doesn't run into another car. Because we have, in particular, skateboards and bicycles operated by juveniles of varying ages around the city. And I think you all know, people on skateboards and little kids on bicycles don't pay any attention to stop signs. So I think if we have to put more all-way stops at intersections, then that's probably the best thing to do. We're not infringing on people's use of their hedges, but we are forcing the automobile traffic to stop and watch for bicycles because bicycles and skateboards, because those people on those conveyances are not going to pay any attention to stop signs. And so if you do nothing else, please take into account the children in the community, children and juveniles on bicycles and skateboards whom, who should, but we all know who will not, obey stop signs or look for traffic in most cases. So let's, because it's the only practical thing to do, let's put the burden of avoiding accidents on automobile drivers, and if that means more stop signs, so be it. But that's a more practical solution to the problem, I think, than hoping that we can either chop down hedges, which I don't think anybody really wants, or try to get the kids to pay attention to intersections, which they won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Be careful.
Excuse me. Well, I'm happy to hear what the council has to say about this issue. It kind of feels like we've gone in a circle with this in the last couple of months. And I have to say, this has been very upsetting to me and my husband, just how this was handled initially. But I'm feeling a lot better about it at this point, that reason seems to be brought into the discussion and sensibility. Because it does feel like it's an ordinance that is too invasive, too extreme, and doesn't allow for the flexibility that I think we need. We did receive a letter, and we have a four-way stop intersection at our corner, and I still to this day do not see it as a safety issue at our particular corner. But it appears that it's being enforced no matter what. So I did have a letter, I spent two days on a letter after Alan and I have attended meetings and talked about this. And we were planning to submit it during our 30-day deadline. And even though this is kind of, this is still ongoing, we're not sure if we should be responding to it via a letter, or if just being here and discussing this is adequate. But we did put down our thoughts in a letter format, and we're encouraged to submit it just for the record.
Just to clarity, the letter to response to the?
To the letter we received.
You received?
Yes.
Not letter concerning this item today?
Well, it's this item, the hedge issue. Right. It's the letter that we received back in September.
The notice, the notice.
Yeah. So I have copies for the record, if you care to have that.
I would encourage you to submit anything you have for the record.
It does summarize our thoughts as of October 28th, and I think we still have some of the same thoughts about this. So I have copies, one for Bill Cornell that's signed, and then copies for all the city council. We do appreciate the moratorium, I think Alan suggested it during one of the previous meetings, and I'm happy that it was agreed that we should take time and just really pause and think about this and try to make sense out of it. So I'm encouraged by this discussion. And it does seem like the ordinance needs to be either revisited or revised in some way. I still think that the three-foot, 25-foot length triangle is very extreme for, if there are situations where it needs to be enforced for a safety issue, I think it's too extreme for many of our properties that are quite small. So I hope that is reconsidered as well. And I do think that faraway stop intersections make a big difference, I think, in most situations. That's probably the solution. So I'm glad to hear that discussion as well. Well, it's good to have this discussion. I do feel like this came out of the blue, and a lot of us were taken by surprise, and to actually have a dialogue. And if it continues to be discussed, I would like those of us affected by it to be included in the discussion as much as possible. And, you know, is it safety? We're saying it's a safety issue, but I wonder if there's more behind it in terms of changing the appearance of the city in some way, you know, whether it be bring the hedges down, you know, for sidewalks and the build-outs, and, you know, there certainly has been thoughts about that, if there's something more behind this than safety. And I think many of us appreciate Ojai for the, more of the urban rural character, and don't really want to see that changed a whole lot. I know we appreciate the rural quality of this town and like living right in the city, and also have the right to our privacy. So the hedges are really important for many reasons for us. And hedges, too, I agree, are, I think should be seen separately from fences and walls. Whether or not they need to have a separate ordinance, I don't know, I don't think that's necessary, but I think there should be a distinction. And as far as existing conditions, maybe thought should be given to a grandfather clause as well, that hedges that have been there a long time, maybe they should remain as is if there's no safety issue. And it appears that we're considering all those options, so.
Great. Thank you.
That's basically it.
Thank you.
I feel like this issue has taken over our lives in the last two months, so I'm kind of tired of talking about it.
Well, thank you for being patient with us. Jane Spiller?
Jane Spiller, 202 Pauline Street. And I'm actually coming to request a hedge, a very tall hedge. Because this ordinance deals with hedges, walls, and fences, and I'm in a situation where I'm next door to a hotel, and the ordinance doesn't provide for privacy or screening. So since you're addressing this, I wanted to ask for flexibility in this ordinance so that that will address the kinds of problems that I experience in my home. The property I'm next door to is the Emel Guana, which is operating under a conditional use permit for an extended stay residential facility. Although the permit is for eight units, and with a ninth to be used for an onsite manager, up to 13 units are being rented out on a nightly basis. This can be quite a lot of traffic going in and out of a very dusty gravel driveway. It's very noisy. The six-foot allowance of fence in the city code does not protect us from the disturbance of the traffic, the parking lot, which is right next to the property line, the dust, the noise, or the headlights that shine right through. Today, there was a camper parked right next to the fence with windows, and you can see it's towering over the six-foot fence. You know, six feet is not very tall, it's about here. And this is a camper with windows looking right into our house and yard. And I find that outrageous. So I'm asking for flexibility in your tinkering with this ordinance that will allow for protection for properties like mine. Now, I understand that this project will be coming back to the city for review to look at their conditional use permit, because there have been so many violations over the years. And at that time, I'm hoping that you will actually request them to plant a hedge, and to set the parking lot back from the property line, as should have been done originally. It should never have been allowed to go right next to a house. But in the meantime, I'm hoping that you can incorporate in your ordinance flexibility for situations like this, and not require the homeowner to go to the city and pay for an expensive variance. I went to the city years ago and asked, and they said, "Oh, you probably couldn't get that, you're going to have to pay for a variance, and there's no guarantee that you'll get it." So I'm hoping you can remedy that, along with the hedge issue. And I'm a big supporter of hedges, I think that's what Ojai's all about.
Great, thank you. I don't have any more speakers card, anybody from the public wanting to speak on this item? If not, then I'll turn it back to council. I do want to comment, oh, yes.
Yeah, Doug LeBarre, Ojai. I just wanted to have a couple of comments. Mr. Blatt said that the hedges that we have in Ojai are unique, and I agree with him. One of the things that Ojai is special for is it's a place where we can come and decompress, that's what people come here for. And Betsy Clapp made a very good suggestion that we slow down the traffic. I have an interest in some property up in Port Towns in Washington. The entire city, which is about the size of Ojai, the entire city has a speed limit of 25 miles an hour, and they enforce it, and it really slows everything down a lot. So they get a huge influx of people from Seattle on a regular basis, and the experience there is very unique, a lot like Ojai.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to turn it back to council. I do have a few comments before I turn to my colleagues. I do agree, I had written on my comments that I thought hedges were a little bit different than walls and fences, but how technical we want to get with that is still up in the air, but to me, they're completely two different things. And to me, the issue is the front and view. And it was interesting that councilmember Wierig gave us a sample of that, of that language, because I was for identifying alternatives. I think we started listing under long-term considerations, and I was actually really concerned with the short-term considerations, because I think that it's going to put us in a predicament that we were previously on, and I'd rather not go that route personally. I'd rather start with the standards and start identifying alternative mitigations. I think what councilmember Wierig is more sound and more specific, and we could have possibly our complete streets look at this, and our planning commission look at this. But I think that's where we should start. To me, it's a no-brainer. Adding flexibility, I don't have any issue with that. I think we could direct staff to go to these sub-commissions and this commission and voice that encouragement of adding flexibility in there. But I think that's a great start. Councilmember Wierig, you had a comment?
Real quick. I think the last speaker pointed out that another great example of where we should have flexibility, in the same section of the code, for example, there, in order to build a fence higher than this allotted height, which is six foot, and the rear and side setbacks, a minor variance or variance, Article 25 or Article 26 would first be required, so she's correct, you have to get a variance. There's no reason why, especially when we're looking at situations in the village mixed-use area, or we're looking at an area like this where we have a CUP, which has turned something into non-residential, next to residential, that we should be able to waive a variance for noise mitigation and have that flexibility. We can include that language very easily, you know, for, as a specific mitigation measure for a particular conflict in use. Point one. Point two, I really like the idea of speed limits being lower. I think we really need to think about this, and it's something that we have control over. And point three, let's not forget, I have looked through some of these other city codes, and one thing we don't do that a lot of other cities do, is they keep cars from parking right on the corner. And perhaps we also need to look as a mitigation issue of trying to keep cars that are, you know, that's as much of a, doesn't make much sense to have a traffic visibility triangle when you've got a pickup truck right on the corner, you can't see around anyway. A lot of cities are pretty strict about that, you can't park right up to the corner. Just want to make, offer those thoughts.
Mayor Proton Blatt?
Yeah, I mirror councilman Wierig's comments, but I think we need to take it one step further, and I think we need to separate hedges out from the walls and the fences. In my opinion, they're just not the same. You have a sterile, cold wall or fence, three feet, six feet, whatever, to me, that is so substantially different from the aesthetics of our community than a hedge, that I don't even think it ought to be even covered in the same code section. I think it should be its own code section, because I don't know about the rest of you, but if I'm looking at a, let's see, a six-foot fence in the front yard, or a six-foot hedge in the front yard, you know, the hedge is so much more attractive than a wall, or a fence, that I think we have to be more specifically in tune with our regulation of the walls and the fences than we do with the hedges. The hedges soften the way everything looks. The hedges bring character to areas of our community, not the way that walls and hedges, the walls and fences do. So I think we, my hope would be that we break the hedges out completely and have a separate part of the municipal code for them.
Councilmember Haney?
You know, I think all of these, all of these issues have to be addressed separately from street corners, to, you know, public right-of-ways, to, you know, from any which way we possibly can to mitigate these problems and concerns. I would just like everyone that's sitting here right now to sit up in their chair and ask themselves, if you were backing out of your driveway with a six-foot hedge, could you see that child? Could you see that grandmother pushing a baby? And with a six-foot fence in the front of your property, you can't. And that's my biggest concern. I think we can mitigate corners, I think we can slow speed limits down, I think we can do a multitude of things in this community. It's not, you know, it's not just one way. But for someone to be able to sit in their car, and to turn their shoulder, and to back up, they need to be able to see, and they need to be able to see clearly. And that's probably my biggest say in this. It's the issue that comes to me. And I'll be honest with you, I, you know, I'm a horticulturist. You know, I plant trees and shrubs and for a living. As I drive this community, I'll be honest with you, seriously, since this has come up, I'm going to say that there's probably a 90 to 95% compliance with people who understand that they need to be able to personally see someone walking, driving, riding, as they back out of their driveway, or exiting, even, you know, a commercial piece of real estate. And it just, you know, I can name the multitude of variety of hedges that I see, and I haven't seen a one that can't be pruned properly, that can't be shaped properly, that can't be watered properly, that can't be fertilized properly, that wouldn't be a vibrant, healthy hedge at 36 inches, even 42 inches. But the reality is, we're all sitting in a vehicle, and this is our line of sight when we're in it. And you just have to ask yourself, can I see over that podium? Can I see over the bottom of that television set? And the reality is, you can't. That's all I have to say about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
Well, safety is certainly an issue. But on 2-2, remember the last meeting, I asked to get a report on the traffic accidents that have been caused by hedges in the community? And it says here that none of the 21 open cases has a history of accidents caused by hedges within the last five years.
No, Betsy, I really, listen, I really don't want to argue this, but I want to say this. Why, no, I want to say this. Why do we have our children wear helmets?
Let me finish, please.
Councilmember Haney, if you could, please let councilmember Clapp finish, and then you could respond after she's done.
All I'm saying is, that's a source of comfort for me. I'm not saying that safety isn't an issue, but I'm just glad to find that there have been no accidents caused by hedges, at least with the 21 that have open cases right now. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying safety isn't an issue, and that it is not important.
Would you like to respond to that?
Yes, Betsy, I'm sorry for not listening and jumping to a conclusion. Like I said, I don't have the answer. Maybe we need to put mirrors on the ends of our driveways if that's an issue, and maybe someone that's walking, driving, talking, or whatever can look in that mirror to see if someone's coming down the driveway, and maybe the owner of that house can look in that mirror as they're backing up to see if someone's coming down the street. I don't have the answer, but I do know it's an issue, and it's a concern, and we cannot walk away from it. We just can't.
And I agree, and I think that by what councilmember Wierig initially proposed would add that flexibility, alternatives, looking at that, I mean, I think that's our best option. I think we're not going to be frugal in not think about our safety issues, but, well, councilmember Clapp did point out that none of the 21 open spaces, it's good to see, but, well, point well taken by councilmember Haney.
I wanted to add one more thing to it. I believe that your property is landmarked, am I correct?
And you're referring to Mr. Thornhill's and Mrs. Thornhill's?
Yes.
It's not landmark?
Because that's something else that we could do with that, is if landscaping is a special part of a landmark property or a historical property, you know, we can send that to the Historic Preservation Committee and actually have them look at it also. Again, there's a multitude of ways of solving this problem. And, and Betsy, I agree with you, I'm glad that there's no accidents in the 21 that have been investigated. I just personally, after we've had this discussion about it, I don't want to, I don't want to be the first on my conscience, I just don't.
Do you need further direction from council where we want this to proceed, or do you want to reiterate what you got? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have the council give specific direction, because I think it's a little bit different in everybody's mind.
Okay, Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One element that I think the council should consider as a question to answer is, with regard to flexibility, if you adopt a recommended option, us drafting for you to then adopt a set of standards to be used to guide flexibility, the next question should be, who will make the decision on implementing those standards in any given instance? The first instance should not be the planning commission, nor the council. The first instance should be the community development director, or the public works director, or the two of them in concert. Given this is part of the zoning code, it might make sense for that to be the community development director, but that's up to you. And you would want to also consider whether you'd want to have a traffic engineer broaden on every case, or provided for in cases that, as the director deems warranted. Thank you.
So I'll turn back to council, decide how we want to direct staff. My staff is to direct staff to come up with alternative solutions to corner where there's potential safety issues in terms of hedges. potential safety issues in terms of hedges. And this is where I, I guess I, because in my head, I would separate hedges from walls and fences. But, yes, Mr. Summers?
Perhaps one more point to consider is, I heard, I think, from everybody, at least three of five, that hedges should be separated from fences. So one approach would be to maintain the existing requirements, the three-foot, six-foot, three-foot, four fences, which are defined as solid walls, and separate that out for hedges, and then this, all of the new standards would be in a new hedge section.
Okay. Mr. Councilmember Wyrick?
I would concur with that, with the caveat that sometimes for incompatible uses, we ought to have the flexibility for mitigation on fence heights.
And I think the way to do that would be to provide that a CUP, as opposed to a variance, could provide for a higher fence height.
Exactly.
Great. So that would be, I guess, my motion with those modifications that were just added by Mr. Summers and Councilmember Wyrick.
Are you saying?
So, I guess...
Replace the variance with a CUP?
No, no, that's not what we're...
That's not what Mr.
Perhaps I should clarify.
Yeah.
As I understand it, it would be, replace the requirement to currently secure a minor variance to allow a fence height higher than six feet, with a requirement that you can secure a minor, a fence height higher than six feet through a condition on a CUP.
That's not what I said.
Then I'm missing something.
Okay. I think that a, if the circumstances call for mitigation, that that's a, that could be classified as a potential mitigation without a variance for situations like between incompatible land uses. And I know that language needs to be filled out, but it would, you could have the flexibility, or alternative mitigation, the same language that was in here for traffic visibility corners, or alternative, alternative mitigation measures, or if a mitigation measure is called for, it could be that a higher fence, we do not want to have someone say, well, you can't have a variance, but you can have a CUP. That's no relief.
So you want it to be, higher height is allowed in a situation where a mitigation measure adopted as part of a sequel document provides for higher height as a necessary mitigation measure, or do you want it to be more than just sequel requirements?
I want to be more than that, because in the VMU, we have situations where CUPs are not required.
Right.
For single-family residences, and say, a motel, or a hotel, that's possible in the VMU right now.
Correct. And in those cases, if they're not...
But there's not a CUP required for the lodging facility.
If we aren't requiring a CUP, then we probably aren't imposing formal mitigation measures either, in terms of sequel requirement mitigation measures.
I'm not sure of the language.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we're not, we're not trying to clarify...
We're not sure of the language, but you understand...
I'm just trying to understand...
The purpose being that if somebody has a house, let's say, next to a hotel, it's, it's a house that's being converted to a hotel in the VMU, which is a use by right.
Correct.
Okay? That they shouldn't, their burden shouldn't be on them to have to have a variance to increase their fence height, to provide some sort of mitigation against noise from that use next door. Now, how do you, how do you say that in a way that provides that flexibility? I don't know, but that's what I'm looking for.
If I could just, I think, the, the, I agree it should not be a conditional use permit, because that, that implies that you have the, the right to do something within a particular zone for whatever it happens to be. A variance says you have a specific situation that warrants that you be allowed to do something else because of the fact that you are unique.
Right.
And I think that, that the variance between the two is the better way to go. But I'm not saying it should have to be a full-blown variance, and I'm not saying that it should be a variance which requires all of the, the public hearings and things like that. But I don't know what that vehicle is, but I think that, that, and I don't think it's a mitigation measure. I think that it is a, it's, it is the, conceptually, it's the same as a variance, but it shouldn't have to go through all of the process for the variance.
For example, $300 to do notifications to 300 feet, you know, and that kind of thing. So if we can come up with the right language, I think that's what we're looking for, a minor variance, or some sort of...
We have, we have a minor variance on the book.
We do, but it still requires 300-foot notification?
Yes, anytime you're...
That's the thing I'm talking about.
So you want to drop that?
Well, I think we ought to, we ought to try to craft...
I think one way to do it would be to provide that in addition to allowing a variance, this is now the case, and to some extent, many situations would qualify for a variance anyway, we could provide that additional height up to some higher max could be allowed, if necessary, to offset and mitigate the impacts of incompatible uses, incompatible land uses. That kind of language would give flexibility to allow a higher height, approved by the director if it's just a fence, or approved as part of the conditions for a CUP, if the project has a CUP. I think that would do the trick to accomplish what you're looking for. And the other thing I'd note in that is that we should be clear to have a higher height limit, because in many cases, for example, cell towers, if you don't have a hard height limit somewhere in your code, then you aren't able to impose it, because federal law will protect hard height limits, but not protect vague height limits. So perhaps that higher height limit could be 10 feet?
Great.
I, I think so.
I think so.
So, so just one last thing, though, I wanted to address Jane's comments here about her problem, is, again, I think coming up with a minor variance or something of that, and obviously, there's an appeal process, so, so even if Jane did take it to planning, and planning turned her down, she could still come to city council, and we could still hear her concern. Her more important concern that she, she addressed, but she didn't highlight extensively in here, is the fact that we're not enforcing existing CUPs. So I think that's just as important to her and her problem as it is being able to build a 12-foot fence, or a 12-foot wall.
I think that's a good point.
Mr. Mayor.
Different subject. Yeah, Councilmember Clapp?
Yeah, it is a different subject, but it's been lurking since 2002. There are open code complaints around the violation of CUP at the Emerald Iguana since 2002, and they have not been held to their CUP. And I am really concerned about that. I don't think that we should be allowing that to happen. I don't know how to proceed with the problem, how we need to address it. And I'm also concerned that it has been on the future agenda items, the Emerald Iguana coming back for a CUP modification, and that disturbs me, because if somebody's coming back for a CUP modification, who never, who never honored their original CUP modification, I, I just find that that would be very concerning to me, because the intensity of use was expanded against a CUP and all these things, and if it went before the planning commission, the planning commission said, you know, didn't realize the history of this matter, they could innocently think that it's okay to expand their CUP for this extended, this more intense use, and, and I think that would be really a, a shame for that to happen. So I don't know how we need, we should proceed with this, but I think since 2002, there have been complaints with this CUP, and we haven't dealt with it, and I don't think it should go on any longer. I think we need to take care of the problem.
And so, I'm going to bring us back to the original proposal, because we are talking about hedges. So we were directing staff on, on what we wanted to address. So is that clear enough direction for you? I think we're, we're getting consensus here as we go along. I know we're kind of doing this on the fly, but I think we just want there, I guess, how I look at it, we just want to add flexibility, mitigation measures that make sense for different land uses.
I, I think we understand your intent, and we're not going to try and craft the solution here on the fly. We'll figure it out later.
Okay. And I'm sure the staff will take into consideration other comments from other subjects, but we're not allowed to give direction on those other matters. With that, any other?
We can, we can come back and say...
Yes.
Discussion item, though.
We can.
And I would like to know if there's any other councilmembers that would like to bring this back for discussion.
And that, that kind of discussion item has to be brought back carefully. Mr. Clark and I have noted that, and will look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any others discussion? If not, then I'm going to move into the next item, which is the concept review.
So, so while Kathy's coming up, I'd just like to clarify a couple of things about this. This is a concept review for an adjustment of property ownership, and the reason it's coming to the city council is because it has to do with city land, and the city council is the property owner. And so you have to authorize us to, to proceed. We're not asking you to figure out how to accomplish a property swap, if that's what you want. We're just asking you whether or not you want to proceed with it. Secondly, the proposal is to, basically to move a nine-foot walkway to a different location, and we'd like the flexibility to look at widths other than nine feet. We don't think we, that necessarily nine feet is the exact right width for the walkway, and we feel that planning considerations should guide how wide that should be. So we'd like permission also to, to look at alternative widths for the walkway, if in fact, you ask us to proceed with, working with the landowner on this.
Ms. Wall?
Well, I think that was a good...
Any other comments?
I think that that was a good introduction, and I think that, I really don't have anything else to offer up, other than, we've tried to put in the staff report just the basic issues having to do with this project, so that we, it's kind of the first step in saying, as, as Mr. Clark indicated, what, what you want staff to do, because it is actually kind of a land swap type deal, and there are some considerations, I think, is, you know, utilities, the width of the access portion, impacts associated with the applicant's proposal, including parking, the security of the, of the proposed outdoor areas, the creation of a semi-inclosed walkway between what would be, you know, two narrowing down of that green belt that's out there right now, and that's, we're just looking for a direction and to help and assist the applicant.
Could you give just an overview report, just a quick one, lay out the picture of what the applicant, just for the benefit of the public?
Oh, sure. Okay, so, so, so at 334, 334 East Ojai, there is, there currently are three parcels. One that would have the existing facility that was once Thomas Aquinas' thrift shop. There's a green belt that goes back to the parking area, and then there's the adjacent arcade. Within that green belt space, there are actually two parcels. There actually is one that's owned in fee title by the applicant. There's a little nine-foot pathway that goes back to a bigger, it's actually a finger to a larger parcel that's owned by the city. That is in the middle between the, what the owner has bought and with the, the actual physical building out there and this green belt. So it kind of stands in between to, this person actually developing their project with outdoors, with outdoor seating. So what they would like to do is swap that nine foot, or move it, you know, move it over to the west along the building, so that they can take and have a whole 20 feet adjacent to their physical building that they now own, and then develop that with outdoor seating. And that would move the city's nine-foot easement over to the west. And so as Rob said, the question would be, is nine feet going to be wide enough once it's between two buildings, or improvement, so to speak? But that's what it would really do. So it's kind of moving our access pedestrian pathway from Ojai Avenue back to that back parking lot, over to the west, and allowing them to have an outdoor seating area 20 feet wide next to what is existing building there. So that's really what it would facilitate.
Any other que, any questions from council to staff?
Mr. Mayor, one more point to note, to add to Mr. Clark and Ms. Wald's comments, is that because the applicant has proposed a project that requires a land exchange with city-owned land, the council's discretion on this is much wider than your typical land use project. Essentially, you can choose whether you would like to move forward or not, and in, in the end, whether you would like to do this or not, looking at the whole range of considerations before you. And it's not just the typical land use project where you have to act based on substantial evidence. Thank you.
Great. I, I don't have any speakers from the audience. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? If not, then I'll turn it back to council for a discussion.
I, yeah, I just have a couple of questions. We've got, that area that the city has the entitlement to is an easement, correct?
No.
No, it's an...
Fee owner.
Okay. And that came from the redevelopment, that came from the redevelopment agency?
At, at one point in time, it was owned by the redevelopment agency, so I think the redevelopment agency contributed some money towards the acquisition or something, or improvement.
And it's just a very, it's a nine-foot strip right down the middle?
Exactly.
Okay. And does the property owner own that building to the west, and the parcel to the west, and the parcel to the east?
They, they own the parcel to the east, and then the grass area on the other side of the walkway. So, so the walkway is the nine feet that the city owns right now, and the grass is owned by the property owner. So they own the, there's an exhibit here that actually shows it pretty well.
But the walkway, the walkway now is almost pushed all the way to the east, and that's not the way it looks on the drawings.
So if you look at AO point one, which is the second, or, yeah, second big sheet, if you look at that exhibit, there's a, there's lots numbered 13 and 14. On the upper left-hand corner, there's a small, there's a small sketch on the upper left-hand corner, and that sketch shows Ojai Avenue, and then in the middle, there's lots 13 and 14.
Yeah.
So, so 14 is where the existing building is, that used to be the thrift shop, and 13 is the grass area. And then the area in between, you can see, connects back to the parking lot, and that's the finger that we own in fee. So what they'd like to do is, in effect, slide 13 and 14 together, which would move our little strip all the way over to the west. And, and we think it's a pretty good plan, really clean up that area and make it nice, but we're concerned, so we, so we would recommend that you authorize us to work with them on that. However, we're concerned that, that that nine foot, when you take into consideration the possible need for landscaping along the existing building to the west, might be too constricting, so we'd like the flexibility to look at other widths, which might be more appropriate from a planning perspective, and that's it.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to sending this to planning and let them look at it, because you could do plant pockets in that nine-foot section. That would, you know, accommodate plenty of room to walk, or plenty of room for, for two people, if not three people, to walk in an eight-foot section. But plant pockets would be an easier way to, something easier for us to maintain, without having to put in a large expanse of some type of landscaping. And I, I don't see any problem with this. In fact, I see it as a win.
So we could, we could show, we do, we could do alternatives for the planning commission to look at, show nine feet, or nine feet and 12 feet, or whatever it might be.
Any other comments for staff? Councilmember Wyrick?
No, I just want to say I'm supportive. I'm supportive of the concept. This has been a bit of a problem area with the police department, and so this would increase, I think, the health of the area in general, in terms of activity, in terms of designed activity. So I think it's a great idea.
You know, I also think that there's other accesses from Ojai Avenue through some of the restaurant areas that are less than nine feet. They're probably four feet, if not five feet. So, I mean, nine feet is wide. Nine feet accommodate a lot of people.
Do you have enough direction? Any other comments from council?
I, I'd just like a vote to, to proceed.
Okay.
And what would the motion be? A move to approve the...
Authorize staff to work with the applicant as, as directed?
I will, so move to authorize the staff to work with the applicant as directed.
Second.
Roll call.
Clapp?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. I'm going to take a quick recess from the city council meeting and open the Ohio Redevelopment Accessor Agency, and I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So move. Second approval.
Roll call.
Clapp?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes.
Laura?
I will reconvene as Ojai City Council, and any oral reports from the city manager?
So we've, we've had a little bit of scheduling trouble with the neighborhood planning, which we were looking at December 5th, because of facility availability, and I'm thinking, just looking at the way the calendar's coming right now, it might make sense to wait until after the holidays to do that, and I just wanted to make sure the council had no problem with that.
No problem.
Okay.
Mr. Summers?
Mr. Summers?
No reports. Thank you.
Deputy?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay.
Hi.
Deputy?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay. Yes, Mr. Summers?
Thank you. Sorry for the delayed, delayed report there. I did want to let the council know that we are working on the sign ordinance update to reflect the Supreme Court's decision in Reed versus Town of Gilbert, and that should be coming up on your agenda in either, I think that's the first meeting in January, is when we're expecting to have that. And we'll get that, that draft document out ahead of time. And the approach that I'm going to take at this point, is to draft a memo that goes through the current sign ordinance, provision by provision, and identify the ones that are risky, levels of risk, propose alternative language, bring that to the council for consideration, but not draft a full draft ordinance yet, because we don't know what your decisions will be. And I'll structure it, so you can just kind of, in the discussion, go down the memo and say, "Yeah, that looks good, looks good," or change this, or do that. That'll give me direction to then draft the draft ordinance.
Great.
Thank you.
I just had one question, if I can ask it, is the interviews for the community development department, when are they being conducted, and can we still submit some names for people to be interviewed?
The recruitment period is closed, and the interviews are this week. But if you could pass the name on to me, we'll, we can see how the interviews go, and if we feel there's a need to reopen, we can do that.
Okay, great.
With that, then I will go to our closed session items. Conference with real property negotiator, government code section 54956.8, property address APN 02021004317, and APN 021004318. Agency negotiator, Robert Clark, city manager, under negotiation price in terms of payment. Any report?
No report expected.
Great. Thank you.